Yeah, we have everyone in the council chambers that wants to get in the council chambers tonight. We have a very full audience and welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and call it a Johnson City Councilman number twenty-two dash twenty-one. The order, so you will call please.
Councilor McCope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Again, I'm welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity to address the council under public communications. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask you to wait for that item to not go into address the council at that time. Next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Would you like to call on any young people in this audience that can lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Can she lead us in the pledge of allegiance? You want to help her lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Officer Johnson?
Yes. Can we have other others?
There we go.
Good to see you with that.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the item of approval. Tris, if we have a change to the agenda, council on the pages? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Evans? We have a motion and a second and a discussion.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is public communications and we have a couple of those this evening under our schedule. First, paying the local office and performance achievements in Johnson Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilor. There's never any doubts about family support. The Johnson Police Department, you should look around. About two things we want to celebrate, about two officers we want to celebrate tonight. First is the inauguration of the new officer, Officer Sarah Shellhammer. She's going to swear her oath of office with the mayor's seat in a very redundant combination after that. That's just fun, Sam, I actually agree. Sarah was hired with Johnson Police Department in July of twenty twenty-two. Since August, she's been attending the Iowa Law and Police Academy's Level Two Basic Training Course and taught at the University of Iowa. On October twenty-first, she successfully completed the police academy and is now an Iowa certified police officer. Officer Shellhammer is a Newland area native, happy to grow up in Irvingdale. She attended Grandview University. In April of twenty twenty-two, she graduated with a bachelor's of arts, degrees in psychology and criminal justice. Sarah's desire to be a police officer is driven by her passion for respect of the law, protection of the citizenry, and serving the residents of Johnson as a public influence. She now moves to join our community-based policing effort to further her career.
Your age right here in the heat of the meeting. I am Sarah Shellhammer.
I am Sarah Shellhammer.
I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and that I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge all of duties
discharge all of duties
of the office of police officer
of the office of police officer
the Johnson Iowa
the Johnson Iowa
as now or hereafter
as now or hereafter
retire by law.
retire by law.
Congratulations. Your signature is almost as bad as mine. I just, I just want to say real quickly before we do the example pictures, you know, we, we know that government office officers here at the government where it's very difficult. I'm kind of like citizens, they can not roll citizens public safety academy and I'm getting first hand experience with some of the family police every day in Indian jobs. And I, I knew it was a tough job before and now I know, now I really know it because I've gone through some of the previous, certainly not me that attended it. All of them did, but I had had to try to pronounce myself. You know, we are excited. If you are joining the force, we are, you know, we are always pleased with you and I have heard a lot of people who break down more so. Thank you very much for being back. Well, everyone.
I have family pictures, go on.
Go all Dallas County. You can, you can use this for your holiday. Literally, you won't be one shot.
One, two, three.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to call for like.
Thank you.
Let me take this for something like this, so she's talking or. It's on. Yeah. She couldn't, if it does turn on.
Okay. We're going to move on to our next question. I would call for Officer Matt Childs. And I'll warn you, this is a little bit of a long thing, but it's hard to recap five years of someone's career before you can. So, Matthew ordered with commendations and I have American Service Service round to be back with Johnson Police Department. In the fall of two thousand seventeen, Officer Matt Childs was appointed to the investigations Unit and impacted the performance duties until August of two thousand twenty-two. Detective Childs continued a multitude of high level investigative assignments while in the investigations Unit, all of which were completed with the utmost professionalism. Detective Childs' major case accomplishments are too numerous for full detail. But he proved assisting with two child death investigations, one murder investigation, two attempted murder investigations, several home invasions, two fatal pedestrian accidents, a multitude of other work activities in the current position in Johnson. The may as well list his investigations when multiple offenders have been convicted and sentenced to prison. As investigators, Detective Childs developed an analytical mindset and strong intelligence gathering abilities which were routinely utilized to identify unknown suspects ready for action throughout the winter of the fall of twenty. When similar arrests occurred in two thousand twenty, Detective Childs monitored a variety of social media platforms to look closely at the Ohio Fusion Center, identifying law enforcement departments to share with local and state partners. Questions, information without a known head not been through Detective Childs diligent around plot records. During his time in the investigations Unit, Detective Childs was also known in training and orientation of several new detectives. Childs took that initiative one step further in two thousand twenty-two before exiting the special assignment by formalizing, formalizing the unit's field training manual curriculum. This program will utilize to train all new detectives assigned to the investigations Unit and that is in its role. Detective Childs performs as correct business partner, as professional, and is keeping with upper level traditions of public service. But has contributed significantly to the mission of this command and the continued role of the unit in the city of Johnson. It would be a great pleasure to award Matt Childs with a combination from American Service Service or the efforts of the Johnson Police Department. I'm going to have two tonight, so. Before we let America speak Saturday, I want to offer a few words as well. Saturday night, I wish I could announce that Detective Childs is here. I just. Tonight is a great night for our department. We, we look back and we can see from our newest officer to one of our more seasoned officers, officers returning back. And what I can say is that American Service Award is just a small amount of the things that Detective Childs at the time did. And one of the things that we noticed when we were doing these, these writers is you can see all that time, all the things that Detective Child did. But we can't do it alone and we have to do it as you see here with our family. And one of the unique things is we have an on-call roster for detective. On-call just means you're the first person to get the call and usually you have to call other people in when it's a major investigation. So what that does, and Cherry can attest to this, is normally we would get a call and you would get a call through Matt or Ethan or other detectives. And you'd be like, hey, I need some help. And usually the first response is, well, you're not on the call, why are you getting called, right? But, so usually that would take away from plans, from some other things and those are special and that really takes away the, you know, the night or the plan that you had going on that evening or that day. And a lot of times you had to do those in a moment's notice. And so you're leaving your spouse, you're leaving your significant other as you go take care of the needs of the department and the city. So on behalf of several of your peers and your supervisors, we'd like to give you this small token gift, Cherry. A night out on the department, on your peers, on your fellows supervisors. And we really appreciate all that you did to behind the scenes that's not recognized in that award. But without more support, Matt, I, I feel would not have been as successful as he was. So thank you very much.
I don't know that I have much to add. Matt, we, we are just, we're just so proud of you. I mean, you accomplished so much and, and we just, we couldn't be more proud of your service here in Johnson and we're just really glad that you're part of our team. Thank you so much.
If you want to make your escape, please folks, now's a good time.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring November Saturday.
I like it.
Small Business Saturday.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, well, it's a, it's very nicely written proclamation that is a blessing of us. I would just commend it to all of you to read again. Without that live Friday, I think they have the Thanksgiving and this will be the following day and on Saturday, Small Business Saturday. We have a lot of small businesses in our community and our district, a lot. And patronize their, their locations and they should win how much support they have in our community and their self. We'll move on into the next item. We will not, we're still under public communications. Is there anyone in the audience with a life address that comes on night that is not always on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening and that is first consideration of ordinance number ten eighty-three and ordinance number ten eighty-seven, commending chapter one fifty-three Johnson Dublin Code and chapter one fifty-nine Johnson Fire. Open this public hearing at seven twenty-three.
Good evening, Mayor, and all the others. I'd also be really official, we're here tonight to look at the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Public Code, and the International Fire Code. The last time that these were amended, by knowledge, was back in two thousand nineteen. And why it's important to us in these, I guess, in the back of, the national codes are issued every three years. And with that, changes in the industry, changes in materials, and we learn from the states of the past. So in that vein, and we've all learned and adopted the new versions of this as they come out. The other portion of that that's important is if you just heard the good tour of the B-Seg, which is part of the rating for insurance premiums here on the city. So that's kind of components of why we look for adopting new codes. So as we look at these new codes, they also took the opportunity to get a in-depth look at chapter one fifty-nine and one fifty-five of the fire code and the building code to look at those and see what we can change to make it work better for us as well as the end user, the existence of the shop. So some of the major changes, I guess, with one fifty-five, I have credit here to federal Fire Code as well. But the major changes within one fifty-five that we looked at were obviously the two thousand twenty-one codes. But also, Matt, there's the mass timber provision that was added that essentially allows builders to use heavy timber construction for bigger projects, like you would call it, bigger, it's just a new construction option that's out there for them. As well as we've added tables, clarity, stuff that was applied in the code, we consolidated other tables. And then we took a look at the B-Schedule, brought all of these together under one table. We do the planner view, B-Schedule, we changed that so that's more of a percentage on the commercial side. We reflect the time that we spend staff-wise reviewing the plants to cover that cost. And then we also look at decks and restructure that so it's valuation based as opposed to flat. So those are probably the most notable changes in section one fifty-five. I guess at this time, if you have any, American Council. In the fire code, the big changes reside in our strength of ordinances. We had all of the C S U C amendments and the recommending, eliminating thirteen R strength of systems which are used and handled by family. Housing and hotels, there's some push naturally to restructure how they're, they're used. Basically what we have today are restrictions that only protect the interior portion where people live and not the building itself as far as economics sort of areas. C S U C in the twenty eighteen edition had a proven amendment out there to get rid of N P thirteen R and require N P thirteen strength of systems. This provides protection of the entire building and the objects. Instead of just reducing the time for, or extending the time for flash over for fires to get quicker in the building and a lot of people get out of that too. So we still have the light safety component who were now, those that have a building profession. The other section that we discussed was heading speed, which has to do with fire apparatus access roads. Many of those provisions are already referenced when we're doing the site plans and that today. One, one area that we're, we focused on was the subdivisions, particularly for single-family dwellings. We're referencing the subdivision ordinance. So for long cul-de-sacs, long gated streets, there are several options that are available through the subdivision ordinance to allow a street to be longer than the standard length. The problems along, regardless of what's being in use today, to provide options to extend the road longer with wider access. Using boulevards, work secondary access for required.
So the changes that you're, that were including that are recommended by the Central Iowa Code of Insurrection, do you remember the scripters? Is that being adopted by other cities in the region?
Yeah, the, the cities that have adopted the twenty-eight speed, they've adopted that as well.
Other questions, Council? Seeing none, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address Council?
I will.
Can you come forward and speak to any of the guests, please?
Therefore, sixty-one fifty-one, that's your good language. The change to the hierarchy, is that directly results? Is that, is that change due to the proposed, I can't remember. Because I know there are some long wings that are proposed of that. Would that change, would that log change in this proposal? I don't think there's change with the fire department in the proposal. It just.
It's not a direct response, but I will, that's a great question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll let, I'll let either the chief or attorney respond to that. How, how would?
It, it's not indirect. It's not an indirect response to the like, uh, situation. It is, what we're trying to do is provide a level of protection. Right now, we have several trees that are very long, they're single access with several homes on them. And our ability to pump water to thousands of feet at the maximum is our concern. So allowing wider streets, parking restrictions, that type of thing is other good, that option. Some of the chiefs employ that, to allow that to be longer.
Right, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to speak, I just saw him stand further in the sector room and saw the third words. You know, this long cul-de-sac and even in, in proposal, there's a long driveway that goes back to a couple of yards. Actually, I think it's three yards. And I believe it, but I said something about it, they got talks of fire marshal, what fire marshal, it's a doubt, seven fifty guns or the fire truck determined around the case of adversity. And.
When we get to that item, maybe have some more conversation about.
Like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just came here to talk about that and here, this is the change. Yeah. Sorry. Thank you.
Good question, we'll, we'll, when we conclude the item on the agenda, we'll have one more inspection. Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address Council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at seven thirty-one. Do we have a motion to approve first consideration of ordinance number ten eighty-three? Should we take them all at the same time or separately? Should we, should, do we have a motion to approve ordinance, first consideration of ordinance number ten eighty-three?
So move, second.
Do we have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, hold please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number ten eighty-seven?
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, hold please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Tell them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Cindy, hold please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the non-consent agenda. Item seven A, review updated hotel property plat of survey. This is not an actual, it's just nothing.
So you can start by pulling up the council tabs I was sharing that day. I could refer the council, the Grand State, Grand State Hotel, Hotel Marshall in the south. Quickly thereafter, Grand State Hotel team utilized and restrapped or reset after. And that the logical action point is that Norman building, that urban position west to near image building, its north side to its south side, so cool. Northeast side of the building would move to the southwest, excuse me, south or northwest. And ditch area would move to the northeast to be closer to that resource sector locations in a hundred thousand dollars for that. In the, in the action. That would also shift the shared car canopy area on the south side from the southwest to the southeast. Which would then acquire, which would want that structure to be fully within quite a parcel, changing that plat of survey. So there's slightly changing the plat of survey, since we can pull up the third page, we need revised plat of survey. Scroll down just a little bit. Level change to plat of survey, this would be north east, we're having this whole house shoots which hard can be what it is. From this side, southwest, southeast. Small, about three hundred ninety square foot, change to the overall plan, which is changing purchase price by about three thousand dollars. Otherwise, buildings architecture and all its movements. As we break this, council just for awareness, new actions required. Change two, building design, work with the closing, which is planned to occur in the sphere after they finalize the appraisal. Destruction, that's very important. As far as any concerns, we move forward as I described, but we'll answer your questions if there are concerns.
Council, any questions for Adam?
Can you tell me again, what corner of the building is the pool?
Yes, the pool will be on the west side of the building now instead of east side. So there's three bay windows, one north, one yard. And I will work towards the yard, it's supposed to towards St. Paul's, because it shares with the other two lots.
Thank you. Any other questions? This does not require any action tonight, so if there aren't any other questions, thank you, Adam. The next item on the agenda is to consider first reading of ordinance number ten eighty-eight, amending ordinance, ordinance numbers eight eighty-six and nine eighty-four, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on a portion of property located within the west central urban renewal area in the city of Johnson County, bulk state of Iowa and I am, for the benefit of the state of Iowa, the city of Johnson County, bulk, Johnson Community School District and other taxing districts. Pay to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies, advance, two and evidence, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the west central urban renewal area. Removing a portion of the amendment number one subarea from the division of revenue and adding the commercial portion of the amendment number two subarea to the division of revenue. Adam?
So two actions to encourage over west central urban renewal area, which stretches along a portion of seventy. And includes the two building hotels. The area shown here in red is lost to be removed. This is a commercial renewal plan. The light project, which is the left corner, it's up west of this, has developed additional significant lots planned. Plus that, now have a plan, the Indian Ustacy project. That one's in the red area, just right at that, forward. So we previously placed this entire area into ordinance, removing residentially developed, or keep your residentially developed areas consistent with this commercial designation of removal of that. Second parts, if you pull up the ten ordinance map. This is two years, the west central urban renewal plan. We'll be adding that ten ordinance, so starting in twenty-year block, collect ignorant areas in green. Which we expect to see proposals for virtual development on all four portions of that, forward next year. Leaving the area in red, the renewal plan, it is not a ten ordinance, not a diswayed ten ordinance, as it's developing as such presently. At the areas in blue or in red way, or existing areas with the renewal plan, that have to be remissed of this. The first three readings of this, we'll also see the renewal plan update, which says some additional projects. Have any questions?
Council, any questions for Adam? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council on the side? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number ten eighty-eight?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven C, consider approval of the following items, rated P C case twenty-two thirty-eight, P C case twenty-two thirty-nine, and second priority located at seventy-five eighty, northwest one hundred street. Resolution number twenty-two dash two eighty-eight, approving the preliminary plan for high-gate estates. Resolution number twenty-two dash two eighty-nine, approving the construction plans for high-gate estates. Resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety, approving a development agreement regarding parkland dedication for high, high-gate estates. Resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety-one, approving a petition and waiver for future improvements to northwest one hundred street adjacent to high-gate states. And resolution twenty-two dash two ninety-two, approving the final plan for high-gate states. Clayton?
Good evening. Why do you have a matter of two minutes?
I think so. How many resolutions are there in that?
William and Kristen Rose are proposing to supplement sixteen point two zero two acres and five logs for single-family detached homes. Property located at seventy-five eighty, northwest one hundred street. Property is on our right twenty forty comprehensive plan at Rural Residential, which generally is housing types on a half acre or greater land and serviced by private on-site septic systems. The property is also zoned R E, the state residential housing district. And as proposed, all lots would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning district as established. Access to the subdivision is via a shared private drive that would be fighting about to meet minimum fire lane requirements term meeting in a fire apparatus turnaround. There is currently no pedestrian circulation along north of the hundred sheet, no sidewalk, no trail. And as proposed, the recommendation is to defer sidewalk construction going north of one hundred street until otherwise directed by council. In recognition that the joining sites don't have any sidewalk, they are likely not to redevelop in the near term. This would not eliminate the opportunity to install sidewalk and trailer in the future. This would defer it to be determined later. Property would not have any sanitary sewer as it is greater than three hundred feet from any existing mains. So each lot would be serviced via on-site septic systems. Property would have new public water main. And one of the action items is the construction plans for the extension of that water main to service each of these homes. No new storm sewer is proposed with this subdivision. And they'll, and stormwater management would be addressed on individual home site basis. Because there's really minimal impermeable areas added with the initial subdivision here. The applicant wanted to not make assumptions about what may or may not be impermeable. They'd rather make sure that they're getting it correct and providing stormwater management based on what actually gets built, not some hypothetical. So those items will still be addressed, but they would just be addressed with the building improvement. There is some mature tree growth on the property. There is a few trees identified for removal to allow for the installation of the fire turnaround. However, the majority of the trees on the site are to be preserved. Where they are proposing to establish a conservation easement along with southern grand hallway, which would preserve all those mature trees along that southern grand hallway. Parking dedication for the site is very minimal. And so the applicant is proposing an equal value alternative of cash and move land dedication. And Park's apartment is recommending accepting the cash and move land dedication. I did provide notice to all the zoning property owners who did receive one public comment at planning zoning commission regarding this making sure the trash doesn't flow into their property during construction. Advocate made conversation with that property owner, so that's the work group. I don't know if there's, you know, audience, can I say that? Other than that, planning zoning commission has recommended approval. It was a vote of four, yes, one, no. But not happy to go into further detail. Any other questions you may have? Leave way of representation, somebody?
Council, any questions for Clayton?
Clayton, can you point out where approximately the turnaround would be? And then also my question, lot two, does lot two extend entirely along the north side of the driveway?
First part of the question, the turnaround is right here. There's currently existing bump out and then right beyond that is where they'll sell that. And then lot two does not extend the whole way. It goes down to here. But it does not have project on northwest one hundred street. But it's this area here.
And it looks like there's a building already in lot two, so that's a, is that a home or is that a?
That is an existing accessory structure and I pointed that out, as a reminder to myself. Lot one and lot two will be tied together. They cannot be sold independent without prior approval of the city council. So if they wanted to sell those independently, they'd have to come back to the city council. And at that time, we would make sure that all conditions are conforming. The only non-conformity that would be created at this time would be accessory structure on the lot without a primary. So the intention, as explained in the staff, is when a building permit were to be pulled for a primary residence on lot two, is when they would revise that lot type, et cetera. Which would eliminate the non-conformity.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Clayton?
So Clayton, could you explain the stormwater approach? So would each of the individual lots that will have a resident home built on themselves, not lot one or two, but other lots, they'll have to have some sort of stormwater detention incorporated onto the lot? Is that the approach they're taking?
Yeah, that is correct.
Other questions, council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on the side?
Honorable mayor of the city council, Mr. Terry Hury, and his side and associates. Here today representing Billy and Kristen Rose, and be happy to take any additional questions.
Council, any questions for the? Thank you. There are no comments, other comments from the audience, no questions from the council? We have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance, whoops. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-eight?
Two eighty-eight.
On the table?
Twenty-two dash two eighty-eight?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash two eighty-eight.
No move.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash two eighty-nine? No move.
Second.
Motion a second for the discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety?
No move. Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number, number twenty-two dash two ninety-one?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second for any discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety-two?
No move, second.
Motion and second discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Did I miss any?
I think that's it.
Will, will I, will I accept that? Moving on to item seventeen. Amending proposed ordinance number ten eighty-four and ordinance amended Johnson Drive ordinances of two thousand seven by amending section one sixty-five by old four. Entities, entities definitions and to repeal and replace section one sixty-six, point twenty-eight entitled, other word was entitled, entitled home occupations and approve third and final reading of ordinance number ten eighty-four as amended and to document published. Aaron?
At second reading of proposal ordinance ten eighty-four, the council, of course, did pass second reading by discussing clarifications that could be made to wording at sections three E and three F. I don't think there's any substantial changes, just clarifications that were made. Of course, there was some, some balling back and forth by email, maybe in swing days after that meeting where that wording was worked out and it's incorporated into, into the draft of ordinance ten eighty-four. That's going to be to consider two items tonight, the first being to amend proposed ordinance to, proposed ordinance ten eighty-four to accept those changes. And then, of course, to pass third and final reading and document publish the ordinance.
Any questions for Aaron, council? I want to thank Christine for taking the issues that were raised last night, also maybe reworking the language a little bit. I believe it's more clear now the words we're supposed to use. Appreciate your help on that, Christine. Is there anyone, any audience would like to address council on the side? Seeing none. Christine, do we need to have a motion to amend first and then third, and finally?
I think that's what Jerry asked before, just to make it clear again.
Do we have a motion to amend ordinance number ten eighty-four?
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve third and final reading of ordinance number ten eighty-four as amended and to document publish?
So move, second.
Motion and a second discussion. Cindy, go please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seventeen, consider first reading of ordinance number ten eighty-nine, amending the Johnson Drive ordinances of two thousand seven by amending section sixty-nine by old eight, modify parking on metal circle, metal place, and to correct minor strip areas here.
Hopefully this will be a fair reminder item for you. First, priority.
Break place?
Break place and metal circle currently have no parking zones established on the north side. However, in reviewing the neighborhood staff identified that the cul-de-sac bowl were excluded, which made turning large vehicles such as fire apparatus difficult. So the proposal is to just add, including the cul-de-sac bowl, onto those existing no parking zone. That would be consistent with practice elsewhere in the community. The minor strip areas error was north of sixty-fourth avenue, was provided in north of sixty-fourth street in code. So you couldn't make enforcement that, that we have in north of sixty-fourth street. I did provide notice to all properties on each cul-de-sac, no public comments I've received today. I, I did receive one phone call and, and paid for all the change, but other than that, no written public comments.
Clayton, I'm sure when I asked you earlier, do they have the impacted residents who didn't contact, did you suggest? Josh, didn't, didn't you tell me that you've been brought to our attention by someone running on the cul-de-sac?
They did bring that, was it, that you did, found out that they contacted you?
They, they contacted them.
Okay, so one member contacted, all it works. Plot and market. And then we review the neighborhood.
Council, any questions for Clayton and Cindy?
Just a reminder that certain members of the council always appreciate a map included. I have a lot of attention, so I don't have this one three or four minutes coming around finding that was, what I just did is. I can include a map outside of the.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council on the side? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this side?
Good evening, header's meant to fix the ten and circle. Uh, two questions. Uh, the first is, I've lived the street for over years, you've heard of those a north side parking lot? There are no signs on the street, is that common to not have signs, should there be signs? Uh, and the second question is, with no parking in the bowl where my house sits, in what changes? If I need to have both my cars off the driveway, there's a space right on my, my house that's in front of the mail box or past the box, there's a mail box, the post office, the silver. Um, that's kind of right there at the edge of the bowl. This is gonna, you know, could be taken with the park there for the length of time or?
What's that?
Clayton?
I'll give you a second map of the bowl of the house. You have fifteen, ten?
Yes.
Well, sweep one, uh, in response to the first question about time, uh, typically in the daytime, uh, local streets is no parking. There's a different people, we don't know why, there's no time, so those need to be installed in parkless. Uh, but it wasn't existing, so, uh, I don't, so there's no chance there. So what's that, but?
I'm, uh, we're getting out.
Sorry Clayton, hang on a second.
This is why I should have been here.
No idea where I'm at now.
All right.
Where do you want me to be here, Clayton?
Can't drive real quick.
Yep. Can you drive with my mouth?
I'm figuring it out. No, I don't, nah. At least that way.
So, no parking past those driveways into the bowl. So parking would be allowed on the south side from there, from that driveway back to forty-eight, forty-nine. That's what's being proposed. That would be consistent with our practice goals. Yeah, I have no problem with, with rigid compliance to a standard because that makes everything easier. I see that in my, my life all the time. There's only like two places in the street that were in, in that hole that allowed for easy parking. One is there in front of my house, the parking is there to the right, car should obviously be parked in there. And then the other spot is if you pan to the, to the left here to go north, there is a, a street light. That is the only other place to park. Uh, sometimes a neighbor where that, that white pickup is, they'll park in block or mail box overnight as they have local vehicles on the property.
Regardless of?
They don't do any parks in the street besides the, the residents that go over here.
Regardless of this change in looking at this here?
There's already no parking there. From other scenes, no parking, yeah, fire hydrants, no parking twenty feet other side of the mail box. Uh, twenty feet by the mailbox.
Twenty feet, one of their side. So, um, a signage, this is a clear route to do it other than having to go out of measure. But just in a quick window survey here?
There shouldn't be parking in the cul-de-sac already. Nice, nice on the damage, that's fair. Okay. Uh, so as far as enforcement, what, what changes with a no parking in the, the full size itself? Is that anybody is parking that is to be called an issued ticket or a citation? What does that mean?
That's correct, could be called an issue of a parking citation.
Which most likely be the residents who live on the cul-de-sac or, if you're not going to place them looking around for.
I, I would refer to our police, the police department on how they enforce parking regulations. But if the public street, if there is anyone utilizing the public street, could buy a one.
Thank you.
And Clayton, I, I don't know that you mentioned this, but the reason why we have these regulations on the cul-de-sacs is it's difficult for our public safety vehicles, our fire trucks and ambulances and other larger trucks to actually manage their way around the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that's correct, and we have gone out and tested the area of the people parking the cul-de-sacs and they do need the full diameter to make the turn radius of our fire engines.
But these are public safety issues for us. Any other, any other comments from the audience or from the council? If not, this is first reading, we have a motion to approve a first reading of ordinance number ten eighty-nine. Second. Motion a second discussion, send the vote please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Here.
Motion passed. Item seven, now consider resolution number twenty-two dash two ninety-three, approving the preliminary plat from Carmel Heperion. Propose twenty-seven lot subdivision east of Northwest Beaver Drive, adjacent to the Heperion Hill Road driving range.
Seton Homes has proposed a twenty-seven lot residential subdivision over approximately fifteen acres adjacent to the Heperion Hill driving range on the east side of Northwest Beaver Drive. And the property, any questions, uh, there on the overhead in the, uh, light or overlay? Residents will require a comment to be members of Heperion Hill Bowl. And after development, the driving range will remain in operation and under origin of Heperion. Um, Cindy could open the preliminary plat please. Maybe we'll make do with just the first page there. There we go. That has both the vicinity map and a, um, yeah, the envelope there encapsulates what these subdivisions look like. Uh, subdivision is served by link the cul-de-sac, labeled nineteen hundred drive on preliminary plat. Nineteen hundred drive beats two smaller cul-de-sacs, Sandy Court and Mendelo Court that follow the ridge lines adjacent to the surrounding drainage. Lots twenty-four through twenty-seven are, these are access off of private drive standing from the cul-de-sac hole of Mendelo Court. Nineteen hundred drive is twenty-seven hundred plus feet in length. You may recall a code ordinance is that its cul-de-sac is six hundred feet in length and serve no more than twenty-five lots. However, the same code chapter permits the city council to approve a subdivision with a cul-de-sac that exceeds these parameters in certain situations. And we brought this issue to the council at a work session in August. At the meeting, Fire Jeep did express some concerns about the length of the cul-de-sac. And staff subsequently had a meeting with Fire Jeep and developer where the developer agreed to do the wording to address some of the concerns and also to restrict parking on either side of nineteen hundred drive from Northwest Beaver Drive to Sandy Court. And again, Sandy Court is that first up, the smaller cul-de-sac there. And in that fashion, we would eliminate opportunity for obstruction of fire vehicle access. Uh, looking at sidewalks, there's a five foot sidewalk depicted on the south side of proposed nineteen hundred drive from the public trail at Northwest Beaver Drive, the lot hole three. And thereafter sidewalks are provided on both sides of all public streets of subdivision. Currently, stormwater flows undetained from the driving range into the drainage way at the north end of the subject property. Stormwater management for the proposed subdivision will be captured in a series of dry and wet bottom basins and be released to the drainage way at pre-developed, uh, do recall that pre-development means what would flow off of a natural prairie as opposed to a, the existing drainage range. And this would improve any existing drainage issues. As regarding utilities, water will be public. Sewer will be provided by use of grinder pumps and low pressure forcing and will also be public with exception of a small number of lots that will be private because basement floor elevations in these lots require use of a larger grinder pump than the city typically uses in our low pressure sewer system. And I included a recommended condition of approval on the staff report to address that issue and that should be condition of rate. Uh, condition number eight states sanitary sewer system will be public with exception to any grinder pump must be upsized above the city's standard grinder pump. No buffers required between the subject properties and the north adjacent residential properties because the properties share the R one one hundred zoning designation. Um, however, the preliminary plat does show a degree of buffering to shield headlight glare from vehicles traveling north on nineteen hundred drive. And Cindy, you might have to page down to, um, find there, this'll work just right here. If we could go to where that street turns from northeast. You'll see that the, um, developer has provided a row of, um, coniferous trees here to help shield headlight glare, um, from traffic that's headed north on nineteen hundred drive from entering the, uh, trespass lighting or vehicle lighting from entering these two residential lots here to the north.
How many of those trees are proposed?
Uh, I believe it's thirty-four. I don't have my staff report opened up to that page, but I, I, yeah, thirty-four is the correct number. And, let's see. Given the sense of nature of building on adjacent steep slopes, staff suggested the use of conservation easements on areas of significant slope in order to prohibit soil disturbance and tree removal. And while conservation easements are not a requirement of our current code, there was precedent throughout Johnson for establishing conservation easements in areas of significant slope. And it's also backed up in several different provisions of our comprehensive plan. That submitted plat does not have any conservation easement shown. In lieu of conservation easement, staff recommended a condition of approval requiring a slope stability analysis to accompany any building permit application for any structure built on fourteen percent or greater slope. And that slope stability analysis would identify areas of soil instability and specify any necessary engineering practices to correct erosion. Uh, looking at street lighting, the outfit proposes to use decorative street lamp staggered on either side of the roadway. Um, Cindy, if you could, open up the staff report and it's page sixteen in my staff report that has an illustration of what the proposed street lamp will look like.
I'm sorry, what page?
Uh, page sixteen. The decorative lamp that the developer proposes, show if there is there. It is not a downcast picture, you know, a typical street lamp would be a downcast picture, not, uh, you get any light at three hundred sixty degrees around the picture. Some of the public comments we've received express concerns that proposed street lighting caused trespass lighting on their, the neighboring properties. In response to these concerns, the developers proposed the use of downcast fixtures from Northwest Beaver Drive to the start of lot twenty-three. Then transitioning to this decorative fixture throughout the rest of the, of the development. And I did intend to incorporate that suggestion into a recommended condition of approval, but it appears that my evidence didn't take on that. Um, such a condition would appear at condition number seven in your staff report. I'm happy to help with wording if council chooses to make that recommendation. So again, that would be, um, the typical downcast street lamp fixture on one side of the roadway from Northwest Beaver Drive basically to that first cul-de-sac. And then, uh, there is a lot for the first cul-de-sac and then, um, staggered decorative street lighting throughout the rest of the subdivision.
Okay, Aaron?
Yes.
Where, where would that be in those questions?
Uh, I said that I intended to get that in there on the resolution and I did not, but it should be follow somewhere near condition number seven.
So it would follow seven?
Yes. And planning commission did consider this item at their last meeting on October thirty-first. A motion was made to recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined in your staff report on pages one, two, and three. And I've included some notes there as well to follow, um, various changes that were made. Um, that motion failed by a vote of two yes votes to three no votes. There were five members of our seven member board present that, that evening. Um, so again, they, they recommended approval, subject to conditions. That vote failed and it's coming to you essentially, uh, with a failed recommendation. The, it is a notice as proposed to adjacent property owners and I've included any written comments we've received with your staff report. We also provided planning commission meeting minutes on tonight's agenda, so the council could be where any comments are made at that meeting. Um, Councilman Coke did point out to me, uh, right before the meeting that in my resolution twenty-one two ninety-three, under the whereas section, um, it states approval of the preliminary plat for the wrong subdivision name that references Chesterfield Estates whereas where it should reference, um, Heper, uh, excuse me, Carmel Heperian. We recycle resolutions sometimes and that was a little whole with her there. So if you were to, um, get to the point where this motion made tonight, I would appreciate if you could make that correction within the result. You have any questions for me, I can work and answer those now, otherwise the developers here with us in the audience tonight as well as their engineer, Mark McMurphy is here with Adam, Adam High Consulting. You have any questions, we can answer those now or we can turn it over to the developers?
Um, you said you had contacted the residents, uh, in that area. And you did have good comments from that, I see that you provided the with you.
Yes, I, I, uh, a lot of feedback from the, um, adjacent property owners that I included with the staff report. I think that was an attachment that I included, um, and I think we heard from six or so different residents by email, but of course there was, um, I haven't even recalled how many residents spoke at the planning commission meeting, at least, at least six spoke at the planning commission meeting as well. Um, most in connection to the subdivision for various reasons. And it looks like we have a full audience here tonight, so I'm sure they'll get a flavor of what some of those comments are in these events.
One question I have for you is, what did the developer, what types you had come with, basically, would be, uh, business across the municipal area?
Uh, typically on a zoning, we would encourage the, um, developer to approach adjacent landowners and have some of those conversations upfront, not outside of, of, uh, the public meeting process. Um, not so much with a, um, with a planning process. Um, I don't know if they've had an opportunity to sit down with the adjacent owner.
No.
No.
I was looking to the dentist for a response there, it sounds like, um, they have, but again, that's something potentially we would try to encourage with the resulting. Uh, we don't always necessarily encourage that with the subdivision because the land use is already, you know, a lot of land uses already in place, it's not a change of a lot of land use, if that makes sense. The zoning class was not suggesting a change of zoning class here. So they are, there are already development rights in place for this property to develop, to be developed, that R one one hundred, um, use. So it's not a requirement of code, it's always good when a developer does reach out and, and speak with the adjacent residents that are required.
I understand, I understand, just asking a few questions here. So once we, the comment that shows up here says it's supposed to be forest preserve and since, how do you get that? What's that forest preserve weight?
Um, yeah, I'll show you, I, I think maybe what that person might be looking to is, I'm guessing a portion of the property might be benefiting from, uh, uh, forest preserve on, on property taxes. Um, it had, it really doesn't have anything to do with the zoning class of the property, it's just how the property was taxed. How the county assessor views, uh,
Okay.
views of the property.
Is that a, a period of time that can use a tax payment or?
Um, it's not necessarily tax payment, uh, I, I don't know, I think it's just a reduced, and really it's a county thing. I don't know if there's anybody here who has any more information on, uh, David, are you aware of how the forest preserve?
Used by the county assessor, yeah, I believe it's over ten years of, of forested area, you know, filed for the tax credit basically. So that area is taxed, where you get a discount and tax, does that mean? Forest? Over there. Uh, if, as long as the conditions that are, as long as the conditions are met, it means, so it's over their size requirement, it's maintained is, that, I mean, it doesn't need some sort of canopy requirement or number of previous breakers or something like that, but it's probably done by the county's.
Right. Right.
Council, any other questions here?
Mayor, I do. Uh, Aaron, the first question that I have for you, I, I kinda want you to go back and describe, uh, the conservation easement versus the slope study, um, and what is actually being prescribed? What was recommended by the city, uh, and then what is being responded by the developer?
So, our conference plan talks about, um, developing land responsibly in a responsible manner and part of doing so is when we receive a development proposal for developed property that, um, is on steep slopes that we try to utilize, uh, conservation easements that would prohibit destruction of soils or, or tree removals. Um, because when we get in and, and constructing areas of steep slopes. after construction, sometimes it's hard to stabilize those soils afterward. And so the best, sometimes the best practice is just to establish some conservation easements in place. It's not a code requirement, but it is kind of, it's one of our guiding development principles on our conference. There's a few different sections and I tried to make a list of those in the staff report. So because it's not a code requirement, I don't know if we can say they have to do it, but there certainly is precedents for doing it in similar areas here in council. And so it's the developer's preference not to utilize conservation easements. And so what we have asked for them to do is say, okay, if you're not going to stay out of areas with steep slopes, then what we would ask is that when you approach the city for a building permit on each of these lots that exhibit steep slopes, that you conduct, have an engineer conduct a soil stability analysis to identify areas of potential issue where if we disturb those soils, it could cause erosion issues. Or if you're going to develop on it, district court would specify certain practices that must be undertaken to best practices to eliminate erosion. So that's the nature of that condition. And gosh, I don't exactly know which number that is, but it should be listed. It's condition number eleven. Nope, condition number on resolution twenty-two today.
And the developer is in agreement to do that on every one of those lots?
I didn't let the developer address that. I know there was some back and forth with the developer and as of last week, they said that they were fine with the wording in the staff report, but they obviously have the ability to come up here and make an alternate case for you tonight if you choose to do so.
Are, are those types of things, those types of reports and findings, or at least that expectation, transferable? Well, it's my understanding that we could get confirmation from the developer that they would build on these lots as they develop them. If they happen to be resold and developed, is such a thing transferable to a new purchaser?
Because it's a condition we placed on the preliminary plan. It didn't matter who develops that lot. It was a condition of the plan.
My next question has to do with lights and I apologize for not giving you a heads up on this. I know we do have some very light fixtures in other parts of Johnston Northwest Seventy-Eight Court. It's one that I would draw your attention to that starts out with the conventional down facing and then transitions to a more stylistic type light. But it does have a shroud over the top, so it doesn't illuminate. Did we have any conversations with the developer about utilizing a light fixture similar to that?
No, what we had asked is that basically when, when a proposed street lighting plan is presented to us, it does have to meet certain requirements. It's ready by our consulting engineer. They look at things like trespass lighting and things of that nature. And so what we had asked was that they provide essentially two street lighting plans, one with conventional fixture, this downcast, and one with their proposed fixture. And if the proposed street lighting results in needing more fixtures than they otherwise would, then that would be an acceptable street lighting plan because the city would have to pay the law or pay those costs of those additional fixtures. Yeah, and then, of course, the developer proposed using the downcast cutoff fixture adjacent to those north adjacent residents and then transitioning to a more decorative, to that decorative style throughout the rest of the subdivision.
I apologize for my naivety on this, but does the city pay the same amount regardless of what style light fixture is?
You know, I'm going to, Public Works, Matt, are you able to elaborate on that?
Yeah, we pay a monthly tariff on that, so it doesn't matter the style of the light. I believe that just adds cost to the development and work that's associated.
Alright, thanks. My last question is, is something that you may just tell me, it's not our business, because I know you started out our entire conversation by discussing that membership is a provision of covenants. And I know that that isn't within the purview of the council. But what happens if someone is either A, not allowed to be a member or not allowed to be a member anymore? Are they forced to move?
Yeah, I would direct that question to the developer. And the city really stays out of issues of covenants. We don't enforce them without an arced covenants. So I guess that might be better directed to the developer.
So I'm kind of confused on something. This would be a first, for me anyway. It says P and C considered deciding when a motion was made to recommend approval, but it didn't pass.
Correct.
So am I to assume that we're, have this in front of us, but it didn't pass P and C?
And it can come to you that way, in that fashion. When it comes to you from the planning commission, they can either recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions. They made some recommended conditions of approval and that recommendation failed. Essentially, it's coming to you as if it were, as if they had recommended denial of the plan. If this were rezoning, and I know this issue came up, I believe at the planning commission meeting, they asked about super majority votes. If this were rezoning, if the planning commission has to recommend approval of a rezoning, it forces a super majority vote of the city council. This is not a rezoning. It's a subdivision. There is no super majority requirement. It's simply coming to you with their recommendation not to approve the plan. It does not require a super majority vote of the council.
Do we have their reasons why not to approve it? Is it reason one through eight?
I believe a lot of their concerns were related to length of the cul-de-sac. Again, street lighting was an issue, routing into the roadway. I know a lot of neighbors stood up at the meeting and objected to routing the roadway along the north property line. You know, the, I think the planning commission meeting wrapped up about ten thirty that night. So there was a lot of, you know, a lot of conversation, a lot of comments. You know, ultimately, it would have been better had they made a motion with suggested conditions to get to a recommendation of approval because then I would have a little more clarity to say, well, they came to you with their changes that they sought them to make in order to garner approval. I don't have that. So again, I guess I would just ask that you maybe look back to the minutes for a better flavor of that conversation.
But Aaron, there was not actually a motion to deny.
It wasn't a motion to deny. It was a, the motion was a motion to recommend approval and they had made some changes to various, you know, like again, when we take a recommendation, we write staff report to take it to our planning commission, we usually do it with conditions. And so then the planning commission cannot pass it with those recommended conditions or amend them. And so they struck, if you look at page two of the staff report, there's a condition number seven regarding council acceptance of the decorative lamp fixture. And they saw fit just to strike that altogether. So you can interpret that to mean that they didn't discuss a transition of using downcast fixtures to lot twenty-three and then the decorative fixture thereafter. But they said, hey, we don't like the, we heard from some neighbors here tonight, we don't like the idea of use of these decorative fixtures. We're striking that altogether. Number eight was, there were some changes made to condition number eight. It really looked for just to reflect some clarity that I had received from the public works directly after I had published the planning commission staff report. So that really wasn't a change made by result of the planning commission. Gosh, it seems like there was one more big one. If you recall with the. Yeah. But generally, something, you know, some of the hot issues on this, of course, were length of cul-de-sac and, and routing of roadway.
And the length of the cul-de-sac issue, I see Chief Clark is here and he, he got me to come forward. But as I understand it, a couple of, since the original kind of proposal that's come through, when this first proposal was first considered, one of the concerns was whether the water, could, would there be a second access for water? And I believe that's been addressed at that.
Correct.
Yes, they agreed to loop the army coming in from the south.
And then secondarily, they also made an adjustment to the no parking for the first several hundred feet everywhere as well.
Yes, and by eliminating the no parking, they, they got the length of the cul-de-sac with parking close to that one thousand feet.
Correct. Yeah, it's a unique kind of, primarily because of the topography. I would say it's long. It's not, it wouldn't be, we have, I think you counted, there were about twenty-three cul-de-sacs in the city of Johnson that are over a thousand feet. So this is long, but it's not unique to the city in the act. And typically, the reason these cul-de-sacs are like this is because of the topography, the unique topography that might exist where home is one of these levels.
Yeah, that's correct. We did some research and most of those twenty-three are long Northwest Beaver Drive. And because they butt up to the core or the lake, there's some sort of unique topography that is not allowed for like a looped street. So most of these have been put in over the last several years. And that's why we are looking at making sure that going forward, that, again, we're looking at infill situations versus the planned development. And so sometimes there are unique areas where they don't really have options for looped or ridged streets. And this would be another one of those unique situations.
Thank you. Aaron or chief, how, how long is it from Sandy Court to the end of the cul-de-sac?
Altogether, let's see, I have here, it's over twenty-seven hundred feet length. It's like two thousand seven hundred fifty-six feet length.
And that's, but, but then from?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's on Beaver Drive to the end of the, the very end of the cul-de-sac.
But from the prescribed, I guess, conclusion of no parking to the final cul-de-sac is how far?
I'm going to defer to the appliance engineer on that one. Mark, are you able to comment on that? And maybe when they come up, they'll be able to clarify that for you.
Can, before we, can the chief confirm what the maximum parking distance is for other us?
Yes, and that, that is what the fire marshal talked about earlier in the adoption of the D and X deals. We are also looking at a thousand feet pretty much being the maximum that we would call.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Aaron?
So if we move to approve this, we're doing so on the recommendation, the P and C recommendation that they did not.
You would be, yes, overriding their recommendation. They recommend.
So the eight items, they're listed there, eight, nine, those are included in the recommendation?
If, yeah, if you, I tried to include my notes on the side here, like say, for instance, on page two, I made note that the planning commission eliminated condition number seven regarding the street lighting and amended condition number eight in their motion to approve. And then if you move down to condition number fourteen.
Then you have to approve?
Correct. And so these, you can do with these conditions what you see fit. If you want to change any of these conditions or modify them, eliminate conditions. There are some that have been, you know, amended per the planning commission's motion. And there are some where there have been some additions, say, like I said, the developer had proposed using a downcast fixture up to lot twenty-three and, and transitioning to the decorative fixture thereafter. You would need to assert that as a new condition. The resolution that was included in your staff report, these are the conditions you're voting on.
I'm going.
Aaron, wasn't another one of the concerns of the planning zoning commission the slope stability analysis? Whether or not that would be required in general?
You know, that remains, that remains a condition from in the resolution. But certainly, yeah, it was a topic of conversation. Trying to make sure that these deep slopes aren't eroding and causing issues further down the road in the future. But that does remain a condition of approval here for the slope stability analysis.
Other questions for Aaron? Do you have a developer or developers represented on the project? Chris Allison?
He's speaking to the.
We're staffing seven, that's in there of letting homes and car access development.
And Mark McMurphy with Advocate Consulting and the lighting specialist here in Land and City area in project. And. I have to say that the P and C did, did go against, did remember for, for after. One of, one of the members voted no on every item that night, but for one. So we decided to bring this forward to you for your respectful consideration and we've done a lot of work to bring this up to satisfaction of staff and gain their recommendation and meet your codes. The project for us has been unprecedented in the amount of framework that we've gone through and, and tried to achieve all the goals that are put before us. And as I stated, we're already seven hundred years ago, there's no, we're only approved at Johnson. One development sector, and this is certainly the big red giant apple top of the tree. So we talked about preconservation slopes and the developers agreed to take reasonable measures, all reasonable measures to make sure that we don't have unnecessary tree clearing and erosion. And he had a record of conserving trees and, and taking extraordinary measures to conserve trees on his other projects, a project in, in Urban Dale that, that we, we routed streets around, rebyted streets at the last minute and on to every, every length that we bought these product to make sure that that would happen. I understand there, there are significant concerns from the neighbors that are here tonight. And I would just point out that there's a vast majority of the five hundred and twenty members of the Johnson Field Club that are in support of this project. We have members of the Field Club here, and Larry Sidwell, the president, are here tonight and they can speak to you about that if we need to. So fire safety, of course, we talked to the fire chief and addressed his concerns. We've got, not only do we have a looped street, we've got no parking on the, on the length of the, on the cul-de-sac. We also have fire suppression that is likely in probably the super majority of these homes. We'll have sprinklers in the houses that will, that will help with that. And I think that was one of the reasons that the fire chief up that was, was a project that he could serve for fire protection. So with that, I want to reiterate on every single item that was brought up, that's been brought up so far, but we're glad to try to answer any questions that you have. And we are definitely asking for your approval of the project.
Just wanted to make one additional comment on the planning zoning. They had asked specifically why we didn't bring other solutions to the table for the developer. This is the solution that we had moved out of that supporting the direction that we would take this entrant. So for us, there wasn't a building to take on other solutions or options to this developer.
Did you talk specifically about the home?
Correct. Correct. I think that was also a big piece of why they objected to that there.
Or did you talk, Peter, when you, when you talked about the?
Or did you talk, Peter, when you, when you talked about the, the couple of different issues? One, the slope stability analysis and how, why are you taking that approach as opposed to conservation easement? So that one. Two, in the plan, there's a plan that deals with the road to help provide sort of buffering for the properties to the north. I think thirty-four trees. Can you talk a little bit about how those will be planted or what efforts will be done to help prevent headlights from cars running up there or golf carts running up there from shining on those factors? Did you address both those issues?
Sure. The, the, the trees will be staggered. They'll be, the double row of, of every conference. And it'll be staggered all the way around that corner. Thirty-four of them. So, so it'll be staggered to fill the gaps. And then as it, as that is planted and, and we expect that it will, it will block and buffer the headlights mitigate the headlights as, as the trees can go around that corner. What, what was the other?
Uh, the, the decision to build with the slopes is the lead approach is approach to conservation easement. Maybe we should start to start to answer questions.
So, so this, this builder built homes that are, are significantly above average. But they're out, they're out higher than actually as far as size and, and the construction of them. And they have, and they have a gymnasium in the basement. So it might be a basement or sub-basement that's twenty feet below what, what a normal basement might be. You have the ability to actually go, go into them and play, play basketball or, or train in, in whatever sport is, is available.
Take advantage of the light plan at the time, shouldn't you?
And, and, and that's, that's exactly right. So they, they have, they have homes throughout the metro that they built with, with these rather unusual construction methods and, and specifications. So, and, and they, they've been very successful. They've stood behind their work for decades now. And they have a very attentive track record of satisfied clients that, that love to, love to come back and have them build new homes for them again. So, and we expect that, that many of those clients will relocate here to Johnson.
A question here. So I've been reading through the mill and the covers sent by the residents across, from the, by the erosion and the waterfalling into their backyard. Like I would say, they have a lot of water actually flows into their backyard and give it a lot of improvement of that and everything else. Now, if this new construction, whether it's a lot of trees, everyone's holding all this soil and anything, that would be explosive. Everything would happen. More water will flow. What are you planning to do about that?
So we, we are, we are proposing a, a stormwater management basin, a detention basin, if you will, right, right where that, the start of that channel that bring water from the, from the majority of the driving range down, down into their, down into, into the trees that goes behind their homes. So.
Ensure that the map.
Tell me, Aaron.
If you open up the preliminary plat, which is. Oh, the very first, very first section. And let's go to maybe page three.
Four.
Right there. So, um, you can bring, bring this up. Right, so right here. Yeah. So this is, this is the driving range here and, and these, these dashed lines are, are contour lines. So water runs perpendicular to those lines. It'll come, it come up. So it's all this water that currently has no type of management at all other than running over a lawn area. It's, it's currently running up and going through there. This will be brought into this detention basin. There's about an eighty percent, a little better than eighty percent reduction in the rate that that water is going to run, run through and be a lot of additions through there. So essentially, you could say it's going to be reduced to a triple. And for, for storms that are two inches, two and a half inches or less, it'll just be basically a triple. It's called channel protection. And it's part of what Mr. Will Waring and Stat brought to Johnson several years ago and has been very, very effective by, by, uh, what's, what it's pleasantly surprised, I've been pleasantly surprised to see how that works.
That's one great thing, yes, about that, like, how about a three east side?
Sure.
That's the most of the residents.
Here. So, um, so there's a, an existing channel that routes through here. And we, we intend to put, we've got driveways that are going across the channel. And then we intend to put stormwater management basin via what we call wet bottom, basically more or less like a pond. And through here and, and then through here, there'd be another one. And then essentially one, one over here. So the water that comes, comes off of these, a lot of it's going to be captured in, in storm sewers that will take, take the flow up to the lake rather than let, rather than letting it go over land. One of the things that this developer does is takes the water off the roof and the, the down top, uses, uses piping to take that into the storm sewer directly. So that's not flowing over the, over the land either. That helps, helps keep the soil stabilized and avoid erosion problems.
I just want to interrupt you real quick. So when you said lake, you're talking about the tension pond that you just showed earlier.
This right here, this, this blue area.
That would be a detention area?
This, this one is. The first one that I showed would be a dry bottom.
Okay. So this will be a wet bottom?
This, this one is planned in the wet bottom.
Okay, okay.
And we have one more that's down, down over here, like right there.
Are there any dam provisions that need to be addressed with regard to those once they become wet bottom and, and to make that road go through?
We contacted the Department of Natural Resources. We got a response back and they're, they're not a permit that's required for that. We are dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers to make sure that we get all of the, all of the requirements that they have or met.
Other questions?
Aaron, I do have a couple more follow-up. The, the, the first of which, I, I'm not following why not conservation easement. Sir, I appreciate and have seen firsthand the, the quality of development that has gone on in other projects. One of my partial, partialities toward a conservation easement is that transferability. Again, if something should happen to be passed a lot or something to someone else, that we have that recorded. So I, I need a little more commentary there. But before we do that, how many of the lots have a slope of fourteen percent or greater and therefore would be subjected to a slope stability or soil stability study?
Most of them. I, I don't have, I don't have a number on both of them at all.
Okay.
The, the terrain out there is fairly, fairly aggressive, larger slope.
Okay.
And, and so, so I can let, I can let the voters talk about some of the issues that are involved with, with trying to do, adapt to a conservation easement type, type setting. But basically, it would be a matter of, of, of slope set. Really, at fourteen percent is really not passing deep. It's deep if you're driving a car up, up it or, or if you're driveway. Fourteen percent slope is what we call it. It runs about seven feet horizontally for every foot of ride. So approximately from, from the top of this, this divided wall to, to the floor over at the other end, it's, it's low to that end. Without me coming in and actually measuring it, it was fascinating. But it. I understand planters, planters intend and so fire people do that standard, but it'd be, it'd be somewhat restrictive given, given the building styles that, that we're doing and the old ones and so forth. So.
I think that's one of the things that when we talked with the staff and tried to work through that language, conservation easement. These are eight, nine, they're parcels that are, they're, 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 like, we put a house on it. There's no real straightforward way of saying twenty, twenty foot off the rear lot line has to be a conservation easement. There's just dynamics that each should take a lot, where you have to drive. When we talked through that, naturally, I'll arrive as staff and as the developer saying, when are we going to do this building permit? We're hiring those professionals that are sort of engineers to, to announce us and say, this is a built a lot. We know we didn't. So we obviously feel we bring a national engineer to say that it does. And we've come that we have a run in, in digging a hole. Once we've done the hole, once we determine still that, okay, it's, 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 it passes to build. We have to see the engineers come back and, and near every corner of that house and ensure soil stability and engineering have need to add more melt with the centers and making sure that it is a whole, a lot of homes and then break areas where there's just crazy rain and soil open. And that they were putting any of it. So we choose to go down route partnering with those, with the, those engineers that actually pass them on, the geotechnical engineers. So that's where we felt we met with the city just to agree on, all right, let's do this whole stability analysis versus conservation easement. It's just not cut and dried for every lot.
Is it true though that a conservation easement would actually protect more trees?
Well, we have these, and, and this is one I'm figuring, but I look at the, the general lot and, and we've got a house that's on that lot. There's clearly, we have to clear the trees to be able to put a lot, a house on it, preserve the trees around it, obviously, for something. That is in, actually in the city's, the, the staff's recommendation. I mean, you have to provide inventory in addition to the geotechnical.
Sure.
I, I offered it to the researchers that afternoon. The, the site itself right now is, is pretty covered. So if you look at an area photo, you can see it's all pretty. It's actually between nineteen ninety, between the nineteen nineties, there you'll have the common record of the Iowa General Apple survey. And two thousand four is when the vast majority of those trees came up and, and we achieved this canopy. It was actually rather, rather sparse on the area of the whole that.
One last question. How long is that from Sandy Court to the midsection there down to that final bowl?
Uh, from, from Sandy Court down, down there, I, I think it's around seven, eight hundred feet.
Okay, so it does not exceed the thousand?
The thousand feet, no.
Any other questions? Do you have anything more, man?
I think one of the, the greater point of concern with the neighbors is the north entrance versus the south entrance. We have a couple of members of the Hyperion team that provided some supportive documentation from an architect that they hired. That is a golf course architect. And not only just how a golf ball is, it also talks about the burn that is there, how cutting the master plan of, of the actual, the driving range on a patient. And quite frankly, a hundred and fifty foot net that have to run down that side. So at some point, we're, it's unfortunate, we're, we're, we're not even very happy, but we provided supportive documentation to the staff, to the council of, here's, here's where the recommendations were.
Is there somebody here this evening that can speak to that and just have any questions?
Yes, we have Larry Sidwell with Hyperion. He is our board president of Hyperion. You want him to say it? And I think he can also address the question on the member of Hyperion.
So specifically, I have a question about the options between the orange and the outside. Yeah, so we have looked aggressively at a separate option. There were a variety of issues. We had this outside result that come in and knew the design for the range. And again, we have some documentation of that that they put in. There were several problems with that option. Certainly, one is specifically regarding the driving range. That position had increased minority and risk for element on the side side of the road. Along with taking drive frames substantially unneachable without taking out series of mounting and adding a hundred and forty high weight, which is unsustainable when we're standing. In addition to that, we also had the issue in terms of the self-access off of the unit regarding the requirements in the city in terms of the offset, which requires us to prove that room needs to be more protected inside. I think the last issue for certain of our improvements was, even though it was a tangible option, which it was not, we talked about the recommendations that keep out. Any issues that we would be dealing with in terms of transferring from north side residence to a greater risk liability to the south side. It increases traffic, it increases hydro. So from a current standpoint, it's all the same.
Any last question?
Regarding membership, the provision of the covenant, covenant, excuse me, is that they be members. What happens if either the club severs membership or they choose to sever them?
Uh, so they cannot be required by any, this is structured exactly the same template that you see there. Other, other than the communities, like Arizona, Tru- more Desert Hills, those are the templates that we use in terms of developing this. So those are the dates, those are the limits. You see, this is something unique, well, behind here. We use other, other templates. Uh, the way, which way it works is that Hyperion has the right to approve individual passive number of here. Which approval cannot be unapproved or removed without. And so the point is that there are some, very few, but occasionally we have a reason we have to excel among the people. The right is why that occurs. We are not permitting those individuals or anybody else purchasing a property within this area. We simply are withholding the right to approve or not approve them. If you do not approve as a member, you still have the opportunity to approve them.
Thank you. Mr. Sidwell, since you're here, could you talk to me a little bit about the process that Hyperion has gone through to identify potential development partner more you may down the, the dance?
So again, I'm Larry Sidwell, President of the Club. I'm just providing an introduction. I'm sorry to be brief, but there are very few people in the room that have a little complex, how we back to our. So I know we're addressing very ethereal and real issues in terms of how this development gets done. We want to make sure that it's done right. Just by way back on, Hyperion has been working for twenty years to try to figure out how best to do what is as well. One of the things I can say is that while Hyperion has over a hundred year history in this area, what we should take for granted, that can continue and sustain. Hyperion faces a number of challenges, similar to some other challenges you see with other clubs in the community. I would say when you don't get actions being taken by other clubs. One very good one is what come. And recently, it kind of made some very dramatic decisions. As a result of those decisions, expectations. As a result of those decisions, um, expectations, we completely lose about two or three members. Uh, because of substantial initiation fees and a special assistance to charge a membership. Try to address financial issues they have. Another club, one of those, just recently sold from private ownership, a public company. So he's going to transfer that club out of the local community. It's now a public company, a company that has a little interest in the local community and is not invested in the local community. Hycarian has some of the same characteristics that those clubs have gone through. Hycarian has, um, over the past several years, basically, they have a big operating boss. I have been totally unable to reinvest back into that club. Uh, we face, I leverage, can't tip on additional debt. Um, club gets not reinvested back into the facilities. We accumulated a substantial amount of deferred maintenance. So the club has to take action. The thought that Hycarian, which stays as it is today, is not sustainable. The reason that's important is this design and the building act is what's why it's big. Uh, two years ago, uh, we put together a strategic design. First thing I'd say is when you look at that brand and over this twenty years, we had a number of proposals that were brought forward to us. And I can guarantee you that many of those proposals will be much less beneficial for everybody in this room that we're all looking at. The proposals that we looked at have included, um, high density apartments, townhomes, munitions stuff. Um, and in each of these cases, what I'd say is from a Hycarian standpoint, clearly we have a vested interest in doing much like the community. And we chose not to bring any of those proposals forward because we did not think they would be beneficial to the community. Uh, what we did design, however, is a proposal to see the companies. Um, and that proposal, uh, was a design and the intention was a low density. Um, utilizing developer that would contain environmental and natural environment that's back there. So retain and utilize that natural beauty rather than destroy it there. We were careful not simply turn over, sell that, any developer, and just then wash their hands and walk away from it. Let them do it alone. Um, some of the proposals talk about clear cutting. And we're talking about saving every tree that we can, you know, low density with large lots. All of these things require consideration if we want more. Our intent is to be good stewards, not just of the Hycarian, um, but for the town as a whole. And the proposal we've brought forward is consistent with that vision that was implemented. Um, the other thing I would say is that when we look at defining this vision, so this construction of this HOA, H O A. Is financially very beneficial. It creates upfront cash for Hycarian and ongoing annuity in the way of additional membership. In this long time. This is exceptionally foundational, Hycarian being able to reinvest back into that club. As I said, that club is an aging club. Uh, we know, we well know that in this community, over the past twenty years, the city Johnson has dramatically changed and progressed. Hycarian has not. We look much today than where we did from five years ago. We have to reinvest back into that club. The destination shrinks in this community. So that's some of, some of the background to what, what I see today. The one thing I would say is when we defined this vision two years ago, we gave up on thinking that anybody was going to come in from the outside. And provide a proposal to Hycarian is on the best interest of this community. And Hycarian told you, that's what we designed, a proposal, you see, twenty years ago. And when we did that, this was, this was Hycarian, right? It wasn't the developer. When we did that, we said, okay, is there any way we can fix that? And so we put together a short list of five developers and they had to meet our criteria. And the number one criteria that we established was reputation. A little bit of reputation risk, we wanted somebody that would work with the natural environment and retain what's there rather than just today. We wanted someone, somebody that has strong reputation, we wanted the type of development we're looking for, high end development. And somebody that then would be, would be the best provider to play, knowing we're going to do all the things we're doing here tonight. Um, maybe somebody that was going to be a problem solver in terms of renovation that came up. You know, and, and the last thing I would say about that is, you know, at the end of the day, clearly, Hycarian continues to want to be stewards. Not just of Hycarian legacy, but for the community. We certainly from brain one have entertained every reasonable and feasible renovation. We create a better experience for everybody involved, retains this original vision in terms of what we've got in mind. And we continue to want to do it. Now that answers your question?
Certainly.
Answer the question.
Council, other questions? The developers? Mr. Sidwell? May, may I actually come up? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council on this side?
Does it involve commentary?
I'm sorry?
You wait for the public?
Yes.
Um, my name's Bob Using. I'm, uh, the sixty-two fifty Oakwood Hills Drive. Uh, I've reached out to various staff of the private building staff and, uh, so the council, uh, commissioners thereon. I reached out to several people here over the past several months, uh, explaining a lot of the questions and problems I have with this area. First off, I want to start again, uh, by saying that I do believe in property owner rights to develop their properties as they see fit. If it meets the zoning requirements and if it meets, if it's within the present character of this surrounding neighborhood. And if it doesn't degrade my neighbors' property and enjoyment of their properties, I'm very willing to go ahead and accommodate that. But neither Hycarian nor the residents that reached out to any of us for our input on this project with, with their plans. My neighbors and I, we already dealt with a lot of, uh, abuses in there, but we've got the camp dogs, uh, going across the street. So with their large caliber weapons being fired, uh, seeing it on a daily basis in, in the nights. We have the Pope House Bar where there's rally on defense in time to time. Uh, we live close to Cerroville Lake, it's not very far away. We can hear the power boats racing, uh, along the lake all the way long during the summer. Um, and also we live next to, uh, Hycarian's driving range. And we get it opened up every single morning, all summer long, all season long, at the crack of dawn. With their people mulling their greens, blowing the breeze around, power breaking the traps, and then it all goes to the south. Um, and then living near the club, we also have to put up with, uh, their late night pool parties, uh, the sword beats, the fireworks and all the traffic that gets in that combat. All of that is acceptable to all of us because we all knew that when we went there and when we moved into the neighborhood. But I really believe, and I really believe when I bought my lot and I'm in this lot just up to the north of this road trees here. That's my lot that, that the mouse is on right now. Um, I really believe that if Hycarian ever fails as well, or abandoned this practice facility for whatever reason. That the very worst I could expect would be some homes be built from that property with their backyards facing my backyard. I never in a million years would have guessed that would have put a road just a few feet outside of the back of my property. Now, they talked about that they put some adequate string there. I'd say it's only adequate for my specific purposes. All of the city where private street is behind residential property, there are many buffers installed. There are berms and fences and trees, not just one of these, but all three of these all the time. Look at Beamer Road, Northwest Avenue, eighty-sixth Street. Everywhere where there's a residential backyard up against both public streets, there's all three of them combinations. Last week's planning voting meeting, there are many public commentators, including myself. We're all asking the same question. Why does nineteen hundred drive need to be routed along the northern part of property? There were very few answers, and I still heard very few answers tonight. When the details of the project first became known, one of us asked the private zoning staff this exact question. And the answer that he was given was that it was never proposed by the residents. Go anywhere else other than that road. Many of us said that meaning kind of very real problems of northern round hind door properties, including lots of privacy, safety threatened, mercy and a very steep and deep ravine. Uh, the negative effect on our property values, future flooding, or a lot of wildlife going to have that, and these are just to name a few. I'm no expert in reading these, uh, these maps, but I know when you've got a lot of these lines really close together, which there are all over the place, those are very deep holes. Though many advantages having a southern route were also presented by my neighbors and myself, including eventual residential development. By the property just to the south of this, of the real, of the drive range, which is presently owned by the two power manufacturing hubs. This is also zone R one hundred, R one, whatever you want to call it. And the possibility, probability that at some future point, that parcel ground is going to be converted to residential ground. Should also be taken into consideration. That southern route is also much flatter and easier in short and safer. And a lot of other neighbors that are here in the audience, uh, they were just concerned about the project and the impact on the neighborhood just in general. So some of the commissioners on the zoning, uh, strongly advised Hycarian and the residents to work with us and explore their southern route. Ultimately vote on, voted the project as proposed down. That was like, we still haven't heard anything from either Hycarian or the residents. For tonight meetings, Hycarian has added two letters addressing these issues. One from themselves and one from their paid consultants. In Hycarian's letter to whom it made concern, there's some reasons why the southern route isn't viable. The first is, is that the realignment prevents this route. At last week's meeting, my zoning staff outlined what those requirements may be if they had a southern bend to the route instead of a northern bend. Hycarian's own engineer has provided the drawing as one of the cementments as to what that entrance would look like. So it's not impossible and it's very feasible and very easily doable. If you want to bring it, if you could, don't worry around this, but, uh, one of the other attachments is the southern label to the southern entrance. Right ways out is extradition engineering to the bottom line. So if this, let me scroll out, so the rug going north comes in and goes south. Easy peasy. I don't know why this can't be done. The second point that they made, that southern route would require a range to be redesigned, but it's also seems pretty trivial. They're already removing or relocating their existing shipping green to the north, that's the street going right through it. They're, they're already removing the southern part of green because the existing street, regardless of those north or south, it's going to go right through it. They're taking out a sand trap, they're relocating all of the existing car paths. They're also building a significant stormwater retention base, which definitely may be done regardless of what happens here tonight. Right in the middle of the driving range. And reportedly, we've heard that they're going to remove the eastern tee box when you hit from the east and hit towards the west. They are touching every major element of the driving already, but apparently moving these towns in the south part of the driving range is just too much of a hassle. The third point is a very high netting requirement that they need to keep air shots depending on the southern route. I'm not really sure where those requirements came from. Does the city have such requirements? I really don't know. There's no such netting along Northwest Avenue, uh, that is adjacent to number four on the street, uh, number, hole number four on the Hycarian. There's no netting there. And I've heard, uh, that there are many cars that are routinely struck by air golf shots, dragging up and down, so I get that one. Does the city have that liability? Does Hycarian or the vending pro golfer, does it have that liability? No, none of them do. According to Hycarian's management, that stated on many occasions that the driver is accepting responsibility of, of driving near golf courses when they get hit by a golf ball. I know that seems absurd to me, but it's apparently true. Apparently, however, Hycarian believes that the residents in this new development, who will become required to be Hycarian members. Won't have, won't be aware of this, it's a liability when they're driving down their own right. It just seems a little absurd. Private country club in Anthony, very nice golf course, has a substantially smaller and tighter driving range along northeast thirty-second street. Which is on the north side of the Anthony, rapidly being developed. There's no mounds, no nettings, and only a few trees separating their driving range from the street. And that street is a major street, much like our own rural paper, if not a residential complex. Wakanda has no such meaning, no such netting along its number three hole, which is adjacent to Lord Ryan. It does, it does have netting around the driving range, but that's because that driving range is significantly smaller and shorter. The only part of Hycarian's letter which I agree is that the potential for increased traffic is high as the development proceeds. I can dream of, and it's going to be right behind my house, just a few feet off my back door. This letter was, the other letter was amid, uh, Hycarian's paid golf course consultant. It seems, if you want to bring that up, uh, it's all somebody's golf offer there. It seemed in a hoping sense that he wasn't really aware of any prior discussion to, uh, Paul Miller. His very first sentence there has come to my attention that there's been some discussion regarding this alternative route. It doesn't sound to me like he had any real discussions about whether or not that is a possibility or not. He also references that there, he, uh, recommended putting, uh, netting around the driving range at Palmer Hills Golf Course in Bethendor, Iowa. A simple review of Google Maps that bulk all of them reveals that their practice facility is less than half the size of Hycarian practice facility. It's, and these, the, and this netting around that practice building isn't protecting cars, uh, because there are no adjacent streets around this, this practice range in the middle of this golf course. Its only purpose, as far as I can tell, is to keep the golf rainfalls in the range and now I'm going to golf. If everyone is really concerned by hitting cars along the southern route, is it too much to have the driving range point the, the? is it too much to have the driving range point the, the, the key box so instead of going due east, that it actually goes a little bit due east northeast, just a couple degrees pointing to the north, that takes the southern street out of play? Finally, my answer is, Hycarian will receive one and a half million dollars in cash plus other services from the dentons upon this council's approval of this project plan. Hycarian will be paid an initiation fee by, by per the dentons for every lot sold. Hycarian will also collect another initiation fee presumably whenever a lot is resold. One, uh, twenty-seven months at the present ten thousand dollars per membership initiation fee is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Twenty-seven new membership households will each pay monthly dues. That would come to be over two hundred thousand dollars annually. And then there's whatever each member household spends on food and drink, beverages, carp rounds, and other things. The dentons is offering to the public twenty-seven lots for high-end multimillion dollar homes. Just a lot alone takes damage gross over ten million dollars in revenues. And to that, whatever they make on building these twenty-seven billion dollar homes. With all these figures, they're telling us that they can possibly redesign this golf course or this traffic range with this southern route. I just don't believe it. As I said in my outset, I fully support the rights of property owners to do whatever they want to do within reason and within code. But in this case, the dentons do not yet have that right. The sale of the property by Hycarian to dentons is solely conditioned upon receiving this council's approval of the project plan. Without your approval, that settlement I have, you must either go back to the drawing board or abandon the project altogether. They have the audacity to come here before you, uh, asking for your blessing, when the majority of the planning and zoning commissioners denied it. They're asking you to turn your backs on them and on us. I respectfully request that you vote for this project down so that a more cooperative project can be developed and put forth at later time. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this line?
I'll be quite a bit longer. My name is Glenn Norris from sixty-two oh five Oakwood Hills Drive. Can you put up the, uh, picture of the, uh, the, yeah, that, that one? And, and bring it down so you can see where, where I'm at? Yeah, there we go. Uh, and I'll use, is it, is this my phone?
Yes.
Okay. I live right here. This is Oakwood Hills Drive. It's about two hundred and fifty yards. It's got hills and it's got oaks, lots of them. And it also is prone to any speeder that has a, has a desire to, to do it two hundred and fifty yards. And we have trouble with that all the time. And basically, we police it ourselves because there's eight, eight parcels, uh, on the south side of Oakwood Hills Drive and about five on the, on the north. Now, th- and this is two hundred and fifty yards. This is twice that at least. There is nobody to police it. There is nobody to complain. It is a huge hill. If you're down here at the, uh, uh, the cemetery and look up, you definitely look up. Now, here's, here is the big problem and the, and the whole reason why the properties to the north and the properties to the, the south are very different. The properties to the north have a ravine in their backyard. And for instance, in order for this property to be built, I was the second property to be built, I, and, and I've seen all of them. In order for this property right here to be built, we had to pay twenty-five thousand dollars of concrete footings to make sure that the house didn't go into the ravine. There are similar problems all the way down here. It is, it is fragile. But they're living with it, of course, because that's how they bought it. But you go down here to the other side and there's, there's, there are property here, a lot of it is, uh, uh, the, the pallets. And, and there's a couple of residential over here, couple of residential over here, and undeveloped right here. But what is missing, what is missing? No ravine, no ravine, no fragile problem of drainage. And all, and, and right now, you can't, and you don't see it on this one, but the way they get access right now to this whole property is through, through a road right here. Now, there we go, road right here. And that's already there. And they already chopped, uh, uh, down part of this hill to make it, uh, less, uh, of a, of a grade. Now, there is, there, there is a part of the law, I'm a lawyer, there's a part of the law of nuisance. I, I gave you, I, I came up here with a whole book on drainage laws in Iowa. There's so much drainage law you wouldn't believe it. Because, you know, in the, in the county, that's, that's a huge deal. But at any rate, there, there is a couple of different ideas about nuisance and negligence. And you've got to bear in mind that what they're trying to do is they're trying to build this road and then give it to you. Now, there is, there's, there's a part of the law that talks about what or not the owner of the, the road is, is liable for subsequent developments. And they're, and the state of Iowa has given municipalities an exemption as long as you, as long as when they built, whatever they built, it was, it was according to the, uh, acceptable engineering standards. But there's another po- problem that, uh, it just has to do with being in nuisance, just being obnoxious under the circumstances. And that's the headlights, and that's the motorcycles, and that's the speeders, and that's the water. That is a nuisance. And the law in that area is interesting because it specifies that the best criteria for deciding whether or not somebody can be making obnoxious nuisance that's your property is first, who came first? Or is it developed? And would, and would the, the nuisance, would the nuisance be obnoxious to nor, to existing users? And that's what we've got here. I thought you had me short.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
I don't know if that one's on.
I was at sixty-two sixty Oakwood Hills Drive, so, uh, it's proposed, proposed today, uh, when the road turns north, those lights are going to be at the back of my house, going in my house, they'll be in my house. I know, uh, the developers proposed to put these trees in, um, six foot today. I think if you look at the grade, um, it starts out much higher on the south and then goes down until, so those light beams, those light beams, or excuse me, those high beam lights are turned on, they're, they're going to hit, again, they're going to create a light. That's one big issue. Uh, I do agree with everything, uh, Glenn and Bob had to say. I do find it interesting, if you look at the denton's plan, uh, I don't see a situation in the plan where there's any of that sitting in the back of my house. Why do they need to get mine? Uh, my last comment would be, uh, I hope you follow what DMC voted in tonight as a product. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this line?
I'm Jennifer Webster. I live at seventy-three seventy Hycarian Road. I'm on this left side, um, representing the neighborhoods there. Um, first of all, I, it's almost been, um, this kind of feels like a not my backyard type of thing with the road, um, issue. Um, I'm just curious about the expertise of, of the people that are coming up. I don't want to cause, um, disagreement, but there are, um, I think we need to leave that to the experts is what I'm trying to say there. Um, as far as, uh, my concern tonight with the builders, I do want to talk about conservation easement and the slope stability analysis. Um, we currently have, um, a quite an urgent problem in our backyard coming right off of, um, Hycarian's driving range. Um, whenever it rains, we have a full creek going through our backyard. Um, there is a storm sewer in our backyard that the, the drainage right off that property comes right into our, um, backyard. We lived there for about ten years and you can definitely see the loss of, um, asphalt and all of that coming from that area. So I would really ask for, um, there, there was, um, comments saying about what are the reasonable measures? Um, I would like that to be clearly defined, um, for this. Um, you know, again, there's, there's going to be a motion, um, with this, um, no matter what we do or for the neighbors and the community, and there could have been a better way to, uh, communicate this to us before we got a postcard and mail copy about, um, this particular change. Um, I am born and raised in Johnston, so I'm very, um, connected to Hycarian and have seen, um, exactly the things that the president was talking about. And they have been, um, good stewards in our community. Um, and so there are opportunities where there to be, I think, some relationship opportunities to build, um, here. And we do know, when we heard from the Hycarian president, that there does have to be something to change here. And there has been no reinvestment back into the fund and, and into the community. And so that does need to be addressed. And the fact that they pointed out that they have been working on this for over twenty years and that there have been many development plans brought forward. I think if we, um, look at this for the future of our community and the way that it's going to grow, um, there could have been other developmental plans that were brought in here that would be much less appealing to us, um, in the neighborhood to have some of those, um, different, um, options that they talked about. And so again, um, I would ask for the city council, please, to check into that soil, deep slope, um, um, conservation easement and move into that. And then know that, um, I heard earlier that we do have, um, they do have allowed land use here in that, uh, development. And so looking at the best choices for all of us involved, um, would be good. Thank you.
Jennifer, please step away. It's hard to even know what your concern is about the, the slope study analysis?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it is clearly stated by the developers what they're going to be doing with that. There was a comment made that they would take reasonable measures on this. I'm curious about what reasonable measures are and that that would be clearly stated.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council?
My name's Chris Farley. I'm the president of the D. R. Point H O A. We've been here for over thirty years now. I can tell you when we moved in, there was a pivot point that was right up along where, where it goes into that drainage basin. Uh, we've seen lots of development. Decant pipe, it's going to happen, but we're hoping that it's smart to do that. We were here when, uh, a brigger of oaks came forward. They said that they were going to put a few kind of analysis that could play something like a pass. Those never came about. Instead, we got road passes. I spent a lot of time walking through here. I'm confused as to what's going on. Uh, if you, if it goes along through here, can you pull this down just a little? If it goes through along here, you're going to have to have fence wall control all the way up to here. Because I've walked back through here and found golf balls from that driving range. This is, this is like a peninsula. You can see the degree of slope here. I don't know how they're going to put houses back here because that's a drainage basin. Drainage face comes right through here. It's a big creek that comes right through there. Not only are they trying to put houses here, it looks like they're trying to put houses up here. That's an impossible feat. It's not going to happen. The degree of slope. My question is, does planning and zoning committee ever go out and look at these lots before they're, they make a move, you know? Because if they did, they'd know that building these four free lots is going to be damn near a disaster. Unless, this is part of that slope. I've been through here. I found golf balls all the way back here. Uh, we got wild turkey, we get deer, we get coyote. And if they don't have trees, it's going to be a little bit of a problem. Hycarian point is that trying to do this for over twenty years, they approached me, they wanted to buy a lot so that they could actually add an access to their bed. And I told them, our tenants went, wow. So obviously, they tried something else. The real issue is they want to keep the driving of the range. They, they could develop that, take out the driving range. And that's their solution, but they want to keep the driving range. And they think they can put those houses in there, they could put nine holes there and take out part of their rock course that along, uh, part, uh, that is, just move the golf course. But that's not the solution for that. Instead, they want to do this instead, I think, uh, D R is going to have problems. When we worked out our land, we couldn't perfect. We had to put in a mechanical rotation system where we've been had to put in so many laps that it would have been two car garage size of, uh, just laps for our, for our sewer. So from what I understand, not all these lots are on a grinder system, are they? They're on the city sewer.
They, they will be served on the city sewer, yes?
All of them?
Yes.
All right.
Not, not necessarily all of them.
That's what I thought I heard.
It could be the, possibly the, potentially the three served off prior to drive.
So when you do that, you're taking on even more trees. So I don't know how they're going to do it. I would invite the, I mean, zoning commission to actually go survey the land for themselves. I think D R is going to have some issues with it as well. Thank you.
Sir, anything coming in? Did you say you belong to the club?
No, I'm on, I'm part of the H O A.
Oh, the H O A, okay.
My other point is actually a trial.
Okay.
It's, uh, first, first road on the right, which cannot go, maybe go on the left.
Okay.
And I might say one other thing. The Lesters were in their house when, they used to, probably would come through their backyard. Their previous, previous owner of the house actually put in a sewer system and were trying to get to the sewer system on our street and, uh, had a grade dial up. So I don't know if they've seen the worst of it really, but there's a, there's definitely a drainage problem. So all those houses that are back in here. Go up a little, other way. Right, these three houses, I would imagine, I don't know where this water is going from, this cul-de-sac here, but that's where it's going to be like there. There's a place it could go there, but it could affect all these, these houses that are right along here. Uh, I have no idea how big these lots are because I'm not used to reading these sorts of things. My concern would be also that, you know, you got somebody's backyard, this, uh, I don't know what the easement is or, or how far. or how far present is to fill up with that property line, but that's also a concern for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. It might be dead. Swap it out. I'm gonna use this one. More. So back to the fire department stuff. Would you, would you mind showing the top of that now?
Sure.
Okay, here's my concern. This, okay, so up this cul-de-sac, there's this long driveway that's all the way up here and over to here. And how is a fire truck gonna turn around if something happens in there? Now, guess what's right here? The armory. Now that's something you don't want to have. Fire. On the left hand, gunpowder. And gunpowder and fire that's working. Woods are very dry out there. So the other concern is the forest. It's a forest preserve. And there are a lot of native species in the forest. There's all kinds of birds, owls, small creatures, including a worm snake. These are worm snakes, which is an endangered species. Anyone cares about the environment, they might wanna look into this property as a forest preserve because there's not a lot of places like this or advice. It's old trees. It's been that way since nineteen ninety. And there's affiliated woodpeckers. There's all kinds of different woodpeckers and also migrating birds that come through. There are different sizes to hear, but it's, it's a forest. And I would recommend, like Chris said, and like some other people said, go there and look at this property. It's steep. There's, it's old trees. There's two hundred year old oaks in there. Unbelievable oaks. And to turn it into a suburb, the houses are just gonna destroy this forest, absolutely destroy it. There's no way you can get in there and put houses without grading down a land and just completely turn it into a sub, you know, suburb neighborhood, from a forest to a suburb neighborhood. I'm sorry that Hyperion's having financial problems, but, you know, destroying our neighborhood and destroying this forest isn't the answer.
Hello, my name is Jerry Erwine. I'm sixty-one fifty Oakwood Hills Drive. The only thing that I'd like to address here again is kind of this gentleman's, the way he considers fire trucks, but from a public safety concern, traffic on Beaver Road. I mean, it's kind of crazy right now coming up around the curve, Hyperion, and then all around. It's crazy. I will say buses, I'm not a traffic engineer or from the school system, but I will say from a bus standpoint, buses do not come down Oakwood Hills Drive into either of those two cul-de-sacs. The children in our neighborhood walk up to Beaver Drive or they have their mothers take them or fathers and drop them off. Now let's just think, with these twenty-seven homes, let's just say each one of these homes had a child, just one. That's twenty-seven children making it from all the way back there, either walking or having their mother or father drive them to Beaver Drive. Now where are they gonna park on nineteen hundred Drive if there's no parking? Why they wait for their child to hop on the bus? Something to think about. Thanks.
Could we make money from their natural heat if I was at eighty-seven, we could hear on Hyperion Point? So among the south side neighbors here, my concern is about the environment, which we know before. Particularly, I brought up last time, nobody could define how much of this forest is going to have to be cut down in order to express the desire to retain as much of the nature as possible, which I really appreciate, but it hasn't been fortified. And I don't know what you can do about the person who buys the property. It depends on the wildlife, their tree line, and then they decide that they don't want trees. So I don't think you can prevent the future disorganization just by putting a link on what the developers are gonna do because the next person who buys the property is going to have the ability to cut down as much as they want. It is a beautiful forest back there with a lot of wildlife and insurance for the wildlife, like some of the people before me. I actually taught them to be an arm. They advised, I mean, there have to be key foot cut down and they focus on that fall and winter time period because of the spring, there's everything and feeding animals. So that would be very detrimental to wildlife, so this is something to take into account. I also wanted to address the lighting. I know it's called a bubble crimes. It's a nice thought that they want to, you know, replace some of the decorative lighting on the front part of the street, but we want to the back of this cul-de-sac. They've got lights, decorative lights that eliminate a sign that is going to be not front for those of us living on the front side. And we will be seeing that from our property. You can see that area very clearly from our backyard. So I would suggest considering optional lights for throughout the development if this goes any further. And yeah, I think I said with the parking, I think that's a new initiative. I know that we do personal parking signs on a cul-de-sac. I know more people that will under that. I know I go to cul-de-sac and we see people parking in our own pipe all the time. So I think we can trust unfortunately the neighbors to under that. I don't think we can believe that. I was wanting to be sure that it's totally safe and proper. So those are my comments and I hope you take, take into account.
I'm Chris Farley. I live at seventy-three seventy five Hyperion Point, down in Florida. I'm south side, but I am not, I don't have a good, good light. I'm going to follow up on several other speakers that have been passing by from the center. Johnston tells itself as a true city and we have an ordinance that protects trees over six inches in diameter. This plan shows over five hundred and forty trees that are to be removed that are in protected class. And then it was on the end that this is not count any of the trees that will need to be removed for the actual house construction. It's just a little, little way. Again, we should all be very concerned with significant float. There are some deep lemons up there. But the other thing that I want to bring up that, and I've talked to a lot of things. Right next to Beaver Drive, it's on a high ridge, a drain, Beaver Creek alley and Detroit Valley. And this property has a lot of big ridges that interact in this whole, maybe, to many valley. And those are sort of the preferred one or creates for prehistoric people. So I would suspect that there are good chance for archaeological sites in that area. Right at our, our the anthropology history. I know that there is a requirement in the city that something to survey. It would certainly be beneficial to know what's out there before I could be so.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
My name is Eric Walter. I live at seventy-three forty-one Hyperion Point and we own the adjacent lot at seventy-three fifty-one. The one that Chris mentioned before that they try to move the street through, the little neighborhood lot. Brent is out there joining lot eight, I believe, down there. So we'll reiterate too many of the points that those people have brought up already. The lighting is a big deal. I know daylight savings time on a walkout, my house at five thirty to come here tonight, it was already dark. And it was, I took a picture of it because of how dark it was looking to the north of our front door. And to see those, the lights that they propose, I grew up in Green Hill twice. I know some of your friends live in the neighborhood. It was the light pollution, I would say, in that same style of light as the Drusen. I know Pioneer's.
I don't know none of those streets.
I know Pioneer's kind of the same way, right, with the greenhouses and the light, especially in the winter, that it has. The light pollution, it's been a big deal. It's run up around that for the last one plus years. The length of cul-de-sac, it really just feels like we're trying to fit, and I hate to be pushy, but around a peg and a square hole here. We talked about, I heard the word infill earlier today, earlier tonight. And it just seems like we're trying really hard to do that, almost too hard at this point. I don't wanna, I reached out for some advice coming into this meeting. And one of the things that they brought up is that in similar situation, it seems like we have a battle here between north and south roads. And I don't think that's what we're trying to do. So I want to encourage people to avoid that. But also, I mean, one of the biggest things to me too is the communication that went out. My name is on the front page of these plans. And I found out last night at seven o'clock, I went for a walk, my daughter checked our mailbox. And one of our kind neighbors had put a note in our mailbox saying that we should come to meetings tonight. I saw the emails that were posted that a Hyperion member who lived on the street to the north knew about it in July, playing meetings with the president of the club, the chairman of the president, the general, I don't know his official role there. I had heard rumors a couple of months ago from a board member of Hyperion that they were under NDA for housing development somewhere. And then I heard recently, a month ago, from a friend of the realtor, much the same rumors. And Saturday night, I just heard from a friend that they were locked in for four hundred thousand dollars and they required every shit to Hyperion. Sure, put the pieces together, and then that letter came. So that's what I'm seeing as far as what was going on. So just a little bit disappointed. I feel wholly unprepared to be in front of you guys tonight, just with that short notice. But I do appreciate you guys' attention. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening, Danny Rock. I live at sixty-one ten Oakwood Hills Drive. Just a couple of things. Again, the green, I lived at the end of the cul-de-sac on Oakwood Hills Drive. So I kind of will be a letting lots twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-seven. So if you look at the image that has all the tree removal, it's very steep behind our house. And so there's a number of trees that will be removed on very steep banks. It's not clear why they need to be removed, since there probably will not be a home there. The ponds that are set there, I voiced this at the planning and zoning commission. As that backs up, it's getting close to our lot and I asked about how water getting pushed up into our lot. And the engineer said, well, that won't happen if there's a hundred year flood there. And they all know that climate change, hundred year floods, don't happen every hundred years anymore. They happen very frequently. Parking on nineteen hundred Drive will be, as the boss talked a lot about a lot at the planning and zoning commission. And if you go up Beaver Drive, obviously the Fourth of July, everyone knows it's maybe that's an outlier event in terms of traffic. But whenever there's a swim meet all summer, Beaver Drive is full of cars. I'm sure there'll be a number of people parking on the, even with the no parking signs there. The engineer for the private kind of made an offhand remark about the lighting and zoning member who voted no to everything last week. Well, she voted no because every proposal that came had these private drives. And so every time she asked the question around, when does Johnson allow the drive? It was, she was given a reason, and then the next case, it was an exemption from the reason she was given the night before. So she was not satisfied with the ins and outs of why we allow these private drives. And these are exceedingly long, through very steep terrain. So, you know, everyone has to agree to all the maintenance and everything else there. This isn't just gonna be some concrete on a flat surface. There's gonna be a lot of maintenance that will have to take place. So obviously, when neighbors come to you along, that all comes back to you to solve those issues. So I expect if this happens, we'll be, if we can't have any meetings like this, probably for the duration. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yeah, I noticed that several questions have been posed. We're gonna try to address those. If you can address and the developers can address some others.
With regard to the private drives and fire medieval access, Cindy, you could come down just a little bit so I can see the top of Bendeloh Court. Yeah, there we go, right there. Yeah, that has been reviewed by our fire marshal who commented on the preliminary plat. And he required that the private drive coming out of Bendeloh Court be twenty feet in width for fire lane access up to a point at which it meets this T intersection here. Private drive comes up up here and then it forks. It continues to go north and west to serve lots twenty-six and twenty-seven, but it also branches off here to serve lots twenty-four and twenty-five. So fire marshal reviewed the preliminary plat and determined that he wanted to see that be twenty feet in width for fire lane access up to a point, I believe he said sixty feet beyond this intersection in both directions. So twenty feet in width, sixty feet beyond where it intersects with this other private drive here in both directions. And they planted it that way to meet his requirement and fire access to those lots was to his satisfaction. With regard to tree removal, if trees greater than six inches, there is an exhibit that shows the trees to be removed. Trees greater than six inches in diameter can be removed. They just have to be shown on the preliminary plat. And so the developer has shown essentially all the trees that will need to be removed to construct nineteen hundred Drive, Sandy Court, Bendeloh Court, the private drives, and facilitate construction of those stormwater basins. And what isn't known at this time is what trees will need to be removed on each individual lot to facilitate construction of homes. That's because the homes haven't been designed for those lots yet. So we've covered that through a condition of approval. They've shown what will be removed for street construction and construction of the basins. Let's see there. I've got a condition of approval requiring, it's, I believe, number nine, all building permits for new structures and or building additions shall be accompanied by a plan for removal of any protected tree, which is a tree greater than six inches. However, tree removal included as part of the billing command, nation shall be subject to approval of city staff. Tree clearing shall be limited to the minimum area necessary to the construction of the proposed improvements. And this is similar to what we did on another subdivision north up here. I believe it's one of the Amocay flats up there. That of course, they developed which trees would be removed on a per lot basis until it came time to submit the billing command. And at that time, staff reviewed the tree removals and questioned. And at that time, staff, um, reviewed the tree removals and questioned if you don't cause this tree here really need to be removed. If it's, um, twenty feet beyond the grading limits of the house, why are we removing it? So there's that extra layer of review that will be given at that point in time. With regard to, yeah, notification, uh, there's no code required notification, uh, requirement. We do a courtesy mailing to, um, adjacent property owners. I don't know where the gentleman, I believe his name is Eric Walter, I don't know if he's one of the immediately adjoining properties or not. Um, if he's one of the immediately adjoining properties, uh, would have got a courtesy notification. Of course, things do sometimes get lost in the mail, so I don't know, um, if he's one of those adjacent property owners or not. Uh, I would, I would defer to the applicants engineer to address the, um, basins and, um, the one hundred year flood comment. I believe what the comment was that the engineer made is that the overflow, um, is at the one hundred year flood elevation, and it would not back up onto the, um, adjacent property owner's, um, property. But the basins are designed in a way to overflow and go downstream. But I'd give it defer to the applicants engineer to, to help explain that.
Yeah, I just don't know if you go for it.
Yeah.
The John Stormwater, you know, as we're looking kind of at the, we have kind of a rough idea. The general direction of, of some housewater flows, whether it's from this neighborhood to the, to the neighborhood to the north. Does it, does it flow east or west? Um, where, where's the high ground in this pool there?
Well, the development to the north, it's going to drain down this way into the ravine. And it's similarly going to, you know, drain from this property, but the, the low point is roughly here.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, so it's, it's draining from both directions toward that low point there.
Okay. Then, uh, does ravine continue as you move to the, to the west? To the west?
Oh, I'm sorry, to the west. Uh, there's a point, um, up here, I don't believe, I think this is pretty flat up here, and then the ravine starts, I think, around this location.
Oh, and then flows east?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, uh, this falls, it looks like, in the other direction when you get on the other side of that cul-de-sac. Looks like it meets up here, flows generally this direction, meets up here, I think.
Towards, towards up there.
Uh, and certainly lots of comments, um, there are fewer than four questions, and I'm trying to answer questions, um. Yeah, I, I, I think I addressed the open-ended questions that were posed by, by the neighbors or, or is there anything that the council wants to address that is hanging out there?
I have a question, and it's about Outlot Z, which is, uh, has to do with the private road and how many, uh, driveways can, or how many lots can be accessed out of driveway, the private lane. And the way you've explained it into the document, it sounds like the Hiferian and the developer want to make it a building lot. And we have said it's not a building lot. And so now it's delineated as Outlot Z. Do we anticipate down the road that we'll get a petition asking that that be a building lot?
Um, certainly, they could come back at a later date and ask, but it'd have to go through a refighting process.
For that specific lot?
Yeah, for that lot. Um, the conditions will all still be the same, which prohibit it, uh, from being a building lot, which is that it's served by private drive. And typically, we've, um, limited access, um, the number of lots that can be accessed by private drive, we've limited to four in the past. And, um, so that's why, uh, you've got lot twenty-four, lot twenty-five, certified private drive, lot twenty-six and twenty-seven, those are the four. Uh, they did have Outlot Z, um, previously platted as a buildable lot, and we told them no, the limitation is four. And so then, that's why it's shown now as an outlot, and outlot can be built on, um, but they would have to come back and request, uh, that lot to be replanted as buildable lot. But again, at that point in time, all those conditions would still be present that would prohibit it from being built on.
Well, in this case, let's say it goes forward, the whole thing goes forward, four lots are platted, there's houses on it, there's this outlot that has a drive going right by it. Why are the, what are the reasons behind the four, uh, lots only on a private, or, uh?
It has to do with, uh, the number of lots that can be planted without adequate services available. And so I've got it quoted in the staff report, let me see if I can find it here quickly. There's the code section that I've referenced. Um, it's chapter one-eight, one-nine, point three, it's, uh, creation of lots with some services not available. Um, and it goes on to say it's a policy of the city to prohibit the creation of lots where adequate services are not provided. And in this case, the adequate service would be of, of the city's, um, private drive, um, being able to provide access. But once you start getting more and more homes, um, access off the private drive, there, there instantly a point where it really needs to become a public street. Um, and so generally, you determine that that limitation is for.
So how many times have we, um, allowed a private drive to have five, four, or?
I don't know that we have, David, are you aware of instances?
I don't know that we have, we have somewhere there is a fifth lot that has street drainage. And that neighbor may not allow to have access off the drivers of the street. Uh, but that's, going back to ten, fifteen years, I don't think all of them ever had, uh, more than four, like, having direct street drainage.
Okay, so the way it's platted now, that is not a fill the whole lot?
Right.
Council, any other questions for Aaron?
It's been a long night, I appreciate your patience. If it was easy, everyone would be done. A lot, lot of things, a lot of feedback, a lot of facts that have come to the table. I think as we have walked this journey the last almost two years, and more so in the last six, eight months with the city staff, they've challenged us through a lot of this journey because this is a complicated, very complicated property. And I don't want to discount, because we have a lot of challenging, why do it this way? You have a staff that, that has held us accountable to a lot of regulations, or code, regulations, conservation. And I, I want to really kind of tee them up, and they've really been, um, charged with overestimating. So this is a, a neighborhood, it's going to be what we say it's going to be. I think the key thing when I hear, hey, you know, if someone could just look at this land, um, I think we interviewed that, so that scratches on his legs with, with some of the city staff and both engineering that, that the city employs. Um, again, to hold the city accountable, that have walked this property, that have looked at this land and, and broken the scale. So that they too can come to you and say, this, here's our recommendation, this is a valuable neighborhood, here's our recommendation. A lot of questions, a lot of concerns, um, I, I, I feel like we've gone to great extent in providing facts, um, of, of whether someone agrees with these facts or not, based on facts. Um, I, I, I go with slope stability, um, that's really something that's not in code right now. Um, but it will be, from what I understand, city staff next year. So what they said to us is, you know, it's not code, um, not having a conservation easement. We would like you to step forward and be held accountable to a future code, a future code. And not only to be able to come work with a geotechnical engineer at a time without a house plan, that can save them lots, and, and you have a geotechnical engineer come out and provide that analysis that we take, hand over to, to the city staff, that they have both engineering, but will leave them accountable, here's this documentation. They will not give me a permit until I have provided the slope stability analysis or, um, or the tree inventory once we've identified the problem. Those are just a point I just wanted to bring, again, I appreciate your patience, I know this has been a long night.
A lot of quite, uh, questions were out there that the hundred year flood will not back up beyond the, beyond its property. So actually, any, any water will overflow and go downstream, it will not back up onto anybody else's property. The danger species, wetlands, archaeology, all that is, we are entering through the Army Corps of Engineers on that. Everything within the waters of the US and, and all the federal statutes and guidelines, so.
Which is actually in progress, these studies are in progress, holding us accountable, we don't have those pieces in place.
Our, our preliminary, preliminary feedback from those is positive.
But again, that helps us fund to be able to provide those studies, considering where this buildable and all the waters are.
Any further questions for the developers?
We just said we have studies still going on, and what are those studies still going on?
Our, our wetland report is being, being fine-lived, and, and I believe that, that person is also looking at the archaeo, looking for archaeological artifacts. And, and any indication of that as well as, uh, the concern about the, uh, the worm thing, or whatever, whatever that might be. Um, that's some of those smaller, uh, targeted, he was looking into that as well.
So you don't lean that up to more, other activities have done, you've leaned that up to more from the, from some department like DNR or anything else you've actually done on this site?
Correct, and I, I believe that the city staff also has in their report, there's, there's, uh, identifying the DNR there.
Okay, yeah, so second question I have, there's, uh, there's a lot of people up here that spoke a lot, why the billboard, and how why they think it's so bad, and you don't think of that. And also, they say, and you also say that, you never had conversation with the actual people surrounding those residential areas. This grabbing song, a lot of this grabbing song, I don't know, this long discussion grabbing song, and we had this discussion earlier on. So I project that strongly that you have a conversation with the representative there on the area, and a kind of requirement. It would be nice to have a conversation, because you're living on a lot, and you're trying to be able to search all for each other, so, and that's, and I keep telling that.
And respectfully, I challenge that, that we did respond through Hiferian, through city staff. My first email I got to them, and, and I, and I quote, we can't hear craving, and with a contentious, um, uncomfortable feeling I had last Monday, and the facts that are provided, it's very difficult to, to concede to anything when everything brought to the table of facts are not agreeable. So there has been a lot of things back and forth between staff and Hiferian, and still remember the same question, still the same question. It wasn't the answer they want.
I understand that, this is not a possible to be on this kind of conversation, and not because any of you had this, they were, when, kind of, they were, and had it all. Yeah, several of them have happened this way, and, you know, so they've dealt with it, we, we, they've also talked with the President across, and after all of this thing happened, like you say, that they did talk about it, if you were watching, and then you would think it happens to this guy. But so just that, you still can have a conversation, and then you get much more progress back. That's the sense, I'm not, I'm just trying to, yeah.
Thank you, there, there was an individual who spoke, uh, and pointed out, uh, at least I paid attention to, that numerous amount of trees were identified for removal, um, that don't necessarily correspond to the road specifically. So I'd like you to comment on removal of trees from lot probably one, uh, the Outlot Z, uh, the border between nine and ten, certainly the large amount of trees out of nine, uh, as to why those. I certainly understand you don't know where the other trees may need to be removed, because it's going to be based on the design of a house. But to some extent, it, it appears like that there were large pumps of trees, uh, that, that were identified well before knowing where a house is going to be, or how it would be changed.
Yeah, so if, if you can pan up, um, pan down, I'm sorry. So we can see lot nine. So, so the, the, uh, tree removal limits on lot nine basically are inside of, of this line. So these are the only trees on lot nine that are being removed, and then a few of them up here with the roadway construction.
So can you just point out then why you have the, it's confusing to look at this, because you have several appears to be trees. So those won't be removed because they're inside the tree removal line?
These, yes, the, these, these will only be removed if, if the house goes out there, but we, we chop them because they're grovel trees there. It's actually sort of an odd shape, it must have been planted by, by somebody, but we, we chop them to put them on the survey, so that we can show that they are there.
That's, so just because there's an X on this does not necessarily mean the tree will be removed?
That's correct, that's correct. Um, and then, uh, also, uh, one of the other questions earlier was, this, this area here, uh, will be a, a channel that will pick up the, the runoff that is coming off the backside of these houses, and that will run up to this construction basin here.
The X's mean third grade point, I think.
Where there's trees.
Okay, okay.
It did look like.
Okay, that's, thank you, I appreciate you all for, uh, for bringing that. So the, on, on page four or five of the, the survey that, that lists out all of those trees larger than six inches, those are not all identified as being removed, those are just inventory.
There is, it's just inventory.
Thank you, okay.
Any other questions for the developers?
Thank you. Mayor, I do have one question, a call of Aaron, and then also one for Christine. Aaron, where in the, uh, conditions of the resolution, does it indicate that we would not move forward if we didn't get clearance from DNR and Army Corps? I see a reference of Army Corps with regard to damming of state waters, but that's the only, uh, provision that I see referencing Army Corps. Is there more that I'm missing, especially when it comes to archaeological surveys?
Yeah, I mean, really, there, I don't think there is a requirement that they go to the DNR for any kind of archaeological survey. Um, they have to approach the DNR for a, uh, NPDES permit, which National Pollution Discharge Illumination System, so that's part of their grading. Uh, they're SWIP and they're grading permit, um, so they do have to go to the DNR for that. You know, there's, we talked about, um, with the developer, they're going to be burming, um, portions of the drainage way for the, the wet ponds. And we talked to them about there might be a requirement that they pursue a dam permit from the DNR at that time. Um, and they've checked in that there's, a, if the dam is, I want to say above ten feet, um, that's the point at which this, uh, requirement comes into play. So I, I don't believe these dams meet that, that requirement. So I don't believe there is any requirement that they go to the DNR for anything other than the NPDES permit, um, or a dam permit. Of course, um, there is a condition in here that addresses, uh, going, you know, that they have to check, this number thirteen, I believe, African Shell Furnishment Endance of Army Corps Engineer Approval to Dam Waters of the State. And under that, you know, I think there are some additional things that they're looking at, that Mark alluded to, that, um, Army Corps is not just, uh, you know, that they're probably looking at tree removals and species requirements and things like that. Okay. Um, a couple of things I want to make clear real quick again, or reiterate, um, if a motion is made here tonight, If a motion is made here tonight, as Tom had pointed out prior to the meeting, under now therefore being resolved, I've referred to Chesterfield State's plat two, and that should more accurately be, of course, Carmel Hyperion. And I don't believe in any of those conditions under resolution 22293 that address the street light issue. So we would need to go back and clean that up, whether you're accepting the use of those decorative fixtures or or removing placement of those fixtures. We was giving some kind of condition for it.
Christine, I'm going to turn to you for a second because I I'd like a little analysis with regard to nuisance. Does the city hold any liability, so to speak, in these cities causing nuisance? And is there any case law to back up such claim?
Most nuisance cases that I'm aware of that have come down recently typically deal with stormwater and runoff and those types of nuisances. I am not familiar with a case that addresses lighting from a road. That's not to say that there isn't one that just doesn't spring to mind. Is it possible that a private citizen can bring a nuisance claim against the city because a road was directing light into their home? Certainly possible that someone can bring that claim. You know, it's always the reasonable person standard and, you know, with the city's proper engineering standards and building a road with mitigation taken. So I mean, it's hard to say necessarily where that would come down, but I'm not aware of any case that does that.
Mayor, let me comment on this for a second. You know, I think we've had a really, really good discussion tonight, both with the citizens here, the developer, folks from Hyperion, and council members in the questions. And this is a, this is, as somebody said earlier, a really challenging issue because it is, it's, it's complex and and it's almost, it's sort of just like, you know, somebody would say, you know, this might be the worst type of street or development to ever design, except I'm not really sure there's really any other way around. And so if you're going to do it, this is probably how you have to do it. And so that's the complexity that makes it really challenging. And so it's, it's a very hard decision, I think, for all of us, how it how it kind of come down on it. You know, for me, you know, I, I, a couple of things that I think that make the error on the side of the more supportive than the opposing are a couple of things. One, I, I do think that that this project is is important for Hyperion and that Hyperion is an important part of our community. And I'm not a member of Hyperion. I've never been a member of Hyperion. But I do think that Hyperion is something that that helps contribute to the vitality of our community. And I think this project is really important. So I think that's something we really need to take into account. And another thing that I think is really important is I actually, and this is, this is counterintuitive in some ways, but and I know there's a lot of concern that we've heard tonight about water flow and stormwater. Where is the water going to flow? How's how's this project going to impact it? And I think those concerns are very legitimate. And one of the things that I've learned since I've been on the council is that if you're concerned about stormwater, leaving land undeveloped is probably not the best way to manage stormwater in that area. Because development actually brings some management to the flow of stormwater. And it's, it's hard to believe that because you have all this concrete and rooftops, but you also now actually have significant infrastructure added when engineers are complimenting the stuff that the city has done as far as requirements that we have for developments. But but by developing this land, you're going to incorporate significant stormwater management infrastructure that I think is going to be helpful. I know we've heard from from folks who live in the neighbors around it that have concerns today about water runoff from Hyperion that will not get managed and will not get improved if a development like this doesn't occur. And so if you want to see improvements to stormwater in this area, some sort of development needs to occur. And and I think that Hyperion has given a lot of thought to how the development should be. They picked a development partner whose, whose, whose work and met the city's stringent standards on development, especially as it relates to slopes of ability. I bet one of the gentlemen talked earlier about homes that had to have reinforced concrete and all that type of stuff. Well, that's what that's what you're going to get from a slope stability analysis is going to say, if you're going to build a home here, here's why, here's what you're going to have to do to build a house on this lot of this location. So I, at this point, I definitely err on the side of supporting, but I, I think it's important and and we work really hard as a group to try to build consensus among the group. And I think we've had a really good discussion tonight that has brought out a lot of facts on the table discussion. So I, I, I want to move forward if there is enough consensus among the group to move forward tonight. If there's not enough consensus with the group to move forward tonight, then I'm, I'm certainly willing to consider to table it and continue to talk about it. But I want you to understand, I think this is a really important project. And I'm going to be a really, really strong advocate on all five of you or four of you to say, we need to make this happen. So just be aware of that because I do think this is a good project and I think it's important for the whole. So I just kind of wanted to lay that out on the table tonight before we kind of get into where everybody else stands. But what else?
Thank you, Tom. I'm like I was, I appreciate what you said. I really liked the down point two, and I think those antiracts could be reused and then a lot saying, also looking at the economy thing of that million dollar homes, so they will bring more tasks in the city. I appreciate that. I really like it and very strong. I like to support it. But I also like to think about the other people around the area, our residents up there, their content should be addressed and making sure they also know what's happening with that. Some of the people that thought it was the flooding and we talked about stormwater flooding and things like that. Some people have thinks that the water floods behind the homes. I had this experience in my previous home, water flooded behind my home. It's so weird that that could be there. That's why I was sort of paying more food program. So that could happen too. So I haven't looked at that part. I do not know. I can't make that. I can only say what they're told. I like to have those things addressed and I'm very strong over that. Just, just don't worry, this will be good for the city. I believe that. But I like to see those things addressed and then it'll be okay. I'm working to table it where it was and make sure that we have all answers. We need to make sure everybody's okay with that.
No comments?
I'm going to, I'm going to, yeah, sorry. Right now, I can't support it only for a couple reasons. Me, I think this is one of the first projects that has come to us where we didn't have P N C's recommendation. And and, you know, it went down two to two and there's really no explanation why. And I'd really like to know what that is. And I don't know that it's a legal thing, if we can even go forward on a project where we don't have a recommendation from P N C. And that's just my, my view.
See, I'm trying to, but P N C's recommendation is just advisory. We have one that.
Correct. P N C's only commission is a recommending body. They, they don't have the authority to bind decisions of the city. The code does say that they are supposed to either approve or deny a plat, but in this case, you know, the fact that their approval did not succeed, I think, status position is that can be inferred that it's not that old. But yes, ultimately, it's up to the community to approve or deny this plat.
Okay. Well, that is, I, there still seems to be, we've done this on previous projects where we take it so that the developer and the engineer could have an opportunity to make peace with the neighborhood, answer those questions, help people get a comfort level, and then everybody comes in and they approve like on a class. I hope that can happen here. There's a lot that needs to be talked about. Right, they get people to get in the room or wherever. That's why, that's why I practice.
So I will make some statements too. I am a landscape architect. I make no, I mean, I think of the council, I think they all realize that I'm usually the one that advocates strongest for trees in our environment. So this project is tough for me. I've listened to everything that has gone on here. I've read the notes. I've read the files. I don't think since Jim, since you and I were elected, we haven't had a P N C not support something, but I did sit in on meeting prior to our election where they had one that had come forward as a, that was denied or whatever. And the city council still moved it forward. So that is happening. I think in the beginning, what I was concerned about this project had to do with the length of the cul-de-sac issues that the public safety brought up about fighting fires, getting access, access to all the remote cul-de-sac. And I believe that that has been adequately worked out. The road being on the north versus the south, there has to be a good reason that they continue to push the north side. It's a longer piece of road instead of going on the south side. Roads are expensive construction. It's not a frivolous thing that they're putting it on the north side. It's a lot more brave and it's a lot more expensive. So I have to believe, I'm not a golfer. You don't want to see me golf, ever. But I have to believe them when they say that they have to put it on the north side for the functioning golf course or the driving range. They have a right to try and keep their drive, driving range. They have a right to develop this property. We have, we have a fabulous community, Johnston is. People want to move here and as it was said earlier, the low hanging fruit is gone. We're constantly doing downhill projects where the leftover land is a land that I'd rather not be built on. I personally would rather not have these slopes built on. I don't like it. But there isn't anything in our ordinance as our zone that says they can't build on those slopes. We're trying to work to change that. As far as the other things, I've met with the builders. They're, they strike me as very responsible builders. They talk to me a lot about the trees they say, they showed me trees they say, they talked to me about protecting the woods. If they have to take down a tree, harvesting that tree lumber, using it in the, in the building, providing dead, leaving standing dead trees where they can for the rafters. I mean, they do care about the environment. And frankly, if you're going to have somebody build that piece of property, I'd rather have them than on somebody else. As far as holding on to it, I don't know that that, I mean, the builders have worked very hard with the staff. And they've attended these meetings. I'm not sure that we're going to get to yes. And that's why I'm going to be supporting them tonight.
My biggest reason for supporting table is so that we could identify better or improved wording with regard to conditions. I also would like to know some of the results of further study and reliance on some of the decision making bodies outside of the city that need to bless this. I have some strong concerns and council member Martin, your argument about the road and the compelling argument to go north versus south, it, you know, rings to me because I'm a self proponent, so to speak, if I had to pick a side in that regard. I have also seen previous developments of theirs, the developers have done, the preservation of trees is outstanding. I sincerely believe it when they say they want to preserve trees because quite frankly, I, I think they speak the same language and that means trees are not only good for the environment, but one way, trees are also good economically. The types of folks that they're trying to appeal to want those types of things. So I actually would want to table this just to clarify the wording. That would be my biggest thing. I am not necessarily pleased about how this has come about. I'm sorry to the neighbors that you had to learn about it in some roundabout ways. And I also wish that we did build on such strong slopes. I can't wait for some of our ordinances in our zone to be passed so that we can better protect the fragile landscape that does exist in undeveloped areas in Johnston. So I know it's somewhat prolonging the inevitable perhaps by that, but I also want to make sure that we do it right and we get all of the information. I feel like there's too many outstanding open ends right now for that intervention. So unless you want to remark, I'm happy to move to it.
I was, I was just going to say that I think I, you know, I, I agree with what Councilman Evans already said. I think with you there, that there are some, obviously some unanswered questions that some of you have here that are existing. So we need to look on it just a little bit longer since we can't get those questions answered. So I was going to turn to Councilman Cole to see if he had a motion.
Well, Brian.
Councilman Berger, if you want to make a motion.
And I'd be happy to second it. I, I do, I know, and I've had a lot of conversations with, with folks and it's pretty clear this is a tense discussion. A lot of folks here are not happy and they don't feel, but I can also tell you that the other side is not happy either.
Do you have a street in your backyard?
Yeah, I do have a street.
Like we don't have the audience.
Yes, I have a street on my backyard. So, yeah, yes. I mean, so it is a, so I, I, I think, I, I, I do think we should encourage a conversation with a group of neighbors and Hyperion developers. I think that would be helpful, that encouraged before our next council. But if that discussion is not respectful and productive, there'll be ramifications for that. So I think that's really important. And here's the thing, we're all Johnston residents and I, I know that Johnston residents can do that because I think that they, everybody else can do that. So for me, I think that's important. I think Shorshway is a good point, but that council argument is a good point of that. But I think it's important that conversation and discussion be respectful and open and understanding all those consequences. So I, that would be, I think, one request I would have is that the staff help facilitate some sort of discussion between now and next council meeting on that. But I do second the motion.
Are we?
We have a motion and a second discussion. So I think we need to be clear with staff about what we're looking for as we table this. I mean, what, what kind of, I mean, what is, what would their goals be? I have no objection to the tabling because it sounds like the majority of the council is thinking that we can be productive and get to a better solution and I'm all for that. I would like to add to that the light issue. I think if it seems, seems quite concerning to me and to the neighbors about the light pollution to the neighbor, to the neighboring houses, I'm not sure that it's been clearly explained why the development has to go with the light fixture that we don't particularly like because of it being a vertical instead of a downed. So that would be one of the goals I, if, as we, if we vote for this, if we do table this, that would be one of the things that I would put on the table. Let's get this figured out.
I think that's a good point because it gives some sort of sense of how much for each of these walls, you know, it radiates out. I think that's a good kind of question and sort of, if nothing else, either, either generates way too much light and that's problematic or maybe the, the fact is it doesn't, it doesn't, it shouldn't cause a problem.
For the neighbor. For the neighbor in fact. There's also light pollution and, and, you know, there's a problem with too much, we have too much light. It can attract wildlife and birds and bats and, you know, I just think we need to be careful not to overlight it.
Councilman Berger, we have some questions around conditions.
One, thank you, Mayor. One of those conditions is in fact adding that provision of lighting. The differential in, the developers agreed to at least downcasing lighting up until a certain point. So trying to resolve whether. Um, so trying to resolve whether or not downcasing lighting could actually be throughout the entire, um, as a compromise, uh, or perhaps making sure that everyone is educated as to what really is kind of alternate lighting, that way back